Yeah, I think we're good to go. All right, welcome back from the lunch break. And we're gonna call this meeting back to order or bring it back to order. I know we're waiting on one supervisor. Okay, there we go. We're good. I was just. Yeah, there you go. All right. Sorry about that. Six point eight or one thirty is informational update on cannabis ordinance tax task force recommendations continued from December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty four. We have Director Turner here, and I'll give it for you.
Thank you, Maria Turner, Community Development Director. The original goal had been to get a draft ordinance updating or making recommendations for updating cannabis policy by the end of this last year. And it is unfortunate that we were able to make that timeline because the task force has been working diligently through a number of subjects. So today is just an update on actions or recommendations taken by the task force since our last update, which was December of last year, that talked about different types of cannabis-related businesses as well as possible zoning districts and permit levels. That is also included as an attachment to this item, but we're not going to cover that. We're going to cover what has happened in the interim and where do we see that we still need to gather their input going forward. So I'll turn it over to our senior planner, Mary Claybon, who has been assisting me in the task force meetings.
Good afternoon, supervisors. Mary Claybon, Senior Planner, Community Development Department. Today, we have Table One, COTF Recommendations as of November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty four. There are a significant number of recommendations that have been discussed at the Cannabis Ordinance Task Force with a significant amount of public comment as well. Rather than going through these line item by line item, what I wanted to discuss with you today was the remaining focus topics that have yet to be discussed. That way, we can touch on all those items if that is the preferred method of the board.
One last thing also, at, gosh, maybe a year ago, the task force appointed two members to serve as, to assist us during any board presentations. Those two members were Rebecca Harper with the Farm Bureau and Jennifer Smith, who was formerly President of the Lake County Cannabis Alliance. Rebecca is out of town, and, but we are still glad to have Jennifer here to help with any questions you may have. Thanks.
All right. Anything else?
So with that, I can go through about a baker's dozen of recommendations that are still yet to be discussed by the task force. These are items that were identified by staff that would necessitate the cannabis ordinance in not just staff's ability to move forward with a lot of these applications and approved projects, but help the applicants and the permittees as well.
Are there any questions or any, anything as of yet from the board? All right, go ahead and continue.
Okay, great. One of the first items that we discussed is the incomplete and abandoned applications. This item is still up for discussion with the task force. As of right now, we do not have a mechanism to recognize the abandoned applications that we currently have as pending projects. With that, the Department of Cannabis Control does have a mechanism to recognize abandoned applications. So we would like to align with the state and that if there's no correspondence for an application with one hundred and eighty days, at that time, we can deem the application not only incomplete but abandoned and not utilize staff's time to keep reaching out for these projects over an extended period of time to see if this applicant is still willing to move forward with that project. Another option is that once projects are approved, typically in any other business venture, you would be able to close your doors if you're no longer interested in pursuing that venture. That is not the case with commercial cannabis use permits. We would like to see that as an option should a permittee decide to withdraw their approved major use permit. An additional item is operational hours. While Article twenty seven of the Lake County Zoning Ordinance does list operational hours specific to delivery, it does not list hours specific to construction and operational hours. We have seen this as an issue considering that some of the operators want to have extended hours during their growing season. So that could potentially affect traffic impacts, noise, things like that, without having those standard operating hours outside of just those delivery hours. An additional item is records retention. We have a seven-year period for records retention. And what we found during annual inspections going onsite to these farms is that some of the farmers are attempting to retain seven years, up to seven years of metric tags for every plant they have ever cultivated. This becomes a problem in having a place to store these. And we've had permittees come to us requesting shipping containers to be able to store these records. With that, we would also like to align with the state and allow the electronic record-keeping mechanism rather than retaining each individual metric tag over the course of seven years. An item of concern that the general public has brought to us is increased setbacks for odor concerns. At this time, Article twenty seven requires one hundred-foot setbacks from the property line and two hundred-foot setbacks from off-site residences. And again, cannabis cultivation odors can be considered noxious by some, but with code enforcement, we would have to have a significant amount of complaints from multiple parties in order for this to be considered a nuisance. So that is an item up for discussion with the task force as well. During annual inspections, again, we have found that some of the operators have RVs onsite, and this is not an allowable use. It's not a permitted use. RVs are only allowed in the circumstance of a temporary dwelling permit if a primary structure, a primary residential structure is in the process of being built and a building permit has been submitted. And with that, this temporary dwelling permit is applied for with a zoning permit. We have seen from cultivators that they want to have the option to have a temporary office within an RV for their, for their, their purposes during the growing season. An item that I think is very important to discuss is the farm labor contractor registration that should be posted onsite. As of right now, the Lake County Zoning Ordinance does require background checks for all permanent employees of commercial cannabis cultivation sites. However, this excludes third-party contractors such as farm labor contractors. And we've discussed this at length with the ag department and touched on it with some members of the community and permittees. And the farm labor contractors are required to register federally and also locally. And what we would like to see within the Community Development Department is our local registration with the ag department posted onsite. That way, we can confirm that this is in fact a bona fide farm labor contractor rather than an individual that may be trying to skirt the process of going through those live scan background check processes. The Notice of Applicability Date of October thirty first, two thousand and twenty was established by Ordinance three zero nine two, which ultimately had a cutoff date with enrollment with the Water Board. And all major use permit, minor use permit applications for commercial cannabis do require to have that Notice of Applicability dated October thirty first, two thousand and twenty or prior. With that, we are not seeing an influx of a significant amount of applications because that date is still into effect. It is potentially considered an unofficial moratorium is what I've heard the, the general public speak of. And they have asked if that date would be released by the board. When I started with the Community Development Department almost four years ago, it was one of the most general inquiries that I had received as the planning technician. To date, I'd say that we receive that potentially two to three times a week. But at that time, a few years ago, I was receiving that at least ten times a day. So we are not receiving that amount of inquiry and influx. However, it does roll right into the next topic that I wanted to discuss today, which is the maximum submittal of twelve applications per month, which was put into place by a two thousand and nineteen ordinance. As I had previously mentioned, the Community Development Department cannot accept major or minor use permit applications for commercial cannabis without that Notice of Applicability dated October thirty first, two thousand and twenty or prior. With that, we do have a limitation of receiving up to twelve applications per month. We currently do not receive twelve applications per month. I believe we have received three applications in the last four months. So it's significantly lower, and I'm not sure if that's something that the board wanted to discuss further. But again, this is recommendations for the task force to make in order to bring that to the board. I have a couple more topics for you if you bear with me. An additional topic of concern is cannabis density of cultivation sites and retail sites and proximity to each other. At this time, the county code does not have any limitation for those. However, it is something to be considered with cumulative impacts. To date, there have been approximately one hundred and fifty-eight cannabis projects. That includes cultivation, retail, processing, and manufacturing. Of those one hundred and fifty-plus projects, one hundred and thirty-six of those were active this last year. Outside of commercial cannabis, there is the adult and primary caregiver medicinal use. This is the residential use, the personal adult use that we don't necessarily talk about at, at the board because it's not the, the hot topic. With this, we have limitations to the structure size in which the personal adult use can be conducted. And with that, the, the limitation is one hundred square feet structures. With that, we're discussing whether this should be expanded to allow for the more patient count should this individual be a primary caregiver for more than one individual. Additionally, code enforcement has responded to several residential locations who seem to have the magic plant count. And they always know what number is appropriate and what is considered an allowable use. And with that, we do not ask for medicinal information, supporting documentation for that. However, there is a mechanism that we could utilize for that through the California Department of Public Health, and that is a unique user identification number that would allow us to review whether these folks were actually patients or if this was recreational adult use for cannabis. I have four more topics for you guys. The opt-out and reduced canopy process is, was brought forward with Resolution two thousand and twenty-four dash fifty-three. And this identified June first as the deadline for opt-out and request to reduce canopy. And this is something that the task force is getting a little bit more information on. There will be a briefing on following, which allows the operation to not necessarily move forward for that year. The task force is going to bring this forward with, I believe, Nara Del Baca is the member of the task force that is going to be discussing this item further. Another issue that we've had is the potential for site reclamation bonds for locations that are going to be closed. This bond would ensure that when this permit reaches the end of its life cycle or when the use is abandoned, that the site is returned to its original condition and any monitoring under the reclamation plan is carried out. And then lastly, the item for meth, the method for calculating canopy is something that we have discussed further with definitions because the state has the definition that canopy means the designated areas at a licensed premises that will contain mature plants at any point in time. However, we have applications where applicants submit site plans with the cultivation area, the canopy area, the canopy area with rows and aisles. So we're looking at a clear-cut definition. That way, we can have a better understanding of how canopy is to be calculated regardless of the schematics of the rows and aisles and the proximity within the cultivation areas.
Thank you. Within that same attachment that Mary just covered, what we're still left to cover in the future, I'd just like to highlight a couple of, or a few of the accomplishments or the recommendations of the task force, just on a few things that I think will be of interest to the board. Property owner approval. There was discussion regarding adding the property owner as a co-applicant and a co-permittee for the purposes of connecting, having a firm nexus to follow should taxes not get paid on time. So we did meet with sheriff's deputies. We met with multiple times with the treasurer, tax collector, and actually decided to go a different route on that as far as holding permittees accountable for tax payments. And instead, the recommendation was to not include the property owner as a co-applicant or a co-permittee. Discussion was on background checks as well. Currently, our code requires background checks for the permittees as well as employees. As we've seen over the last few years since this code has been in, in action, that could have applied to somebody coming to fix the lights on your security system. And it, it just seemed to be a little farther ranging than actually was consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. And so after a lot of discussion, the task force recommended that the fingerprinting or background check not be, not include third-party contractors or their employees. That would enable our cannabis farmers to operate much in the same manner as our other ag, which has frequent labor coordinators and bring in their labor teams, things like that. And so the recommendation was to send a, kind of go closer to what's already taking place in the county. Skip in a few. Annual inspections. Currently, they go every year for the first five years. The recommendation, oh, and then after that, which we're already starting to get recommend, or requests from people to say, hey, don't come inspect my stuff this year, which actually makes me more interested in inspecting their permit than normal. But, but we are getting to the point where some of these permits are, have been in use for up to five years. The recommendation of the task force is to maintain the one to five annual inspections for the first five years. And then after that, if it's in good standing, if we haven't encountered problems, to then go to every other year. We still want to maintain a regular, you know, touch and base with our permittees to make sure everything's going according to their, their project description and their conditions of approval, but not every year, which would be helpful as we go forward on staff since we do provide, or we do conduct our annual compliance monitoring visits for all over one hundred permits that we have now. And so that'll help us as we add to the requirement to be able to allow the ones who have been in good standing to have that year off. That does not apply to transferring of ownership. These use permits or those, these cannabis permits, just like any other use permit, follows the land. And so sometimes that cannabis business will get sold. So what we are currently doing now is when that does get sold, we're making no So what we are currently doing now is when that does get sold, we're making note in the record, and we're also scheduling, similar to a pre-app, uh, we're scheduling an appointment with those new owners to go over the whole project so that they're walking in ready to keep that project the same, operation the same as it has been, and maintain that same compliance with their conditions of approval. Transference, excuse me, transference of ownership, however, restarts that zero to five annual uh inspection clock. We're getting stronger on the removal of trees, minimizing the removal of certain types of oak. We did add wording uh to defer to a tree oak ordinance, which I'm hoping or a a tree removal ordinance, which we are hoping to work on following the Lake County twenty fifty update, if not before. Generators. Rules were changed regarding the generators to both recognize that we don't want them there long-term while balancing it with the the fact that it takes sometimes a couple of years, two to three years for PG&E to be able to pull power out to a location. And so the the amendments are um making sure that it's important that these generators meet all carb standards, air emission standards. Uh, we're encouraging noise reduction um tools and applying it to all cannabis-related businesses. Uh, the current code does not speak to outdoor cultivation. We think it should. In pesticides, there is significant new language to update it and make it standard with the definition in state law. And we thank our agricultural commissioner for providing that specific language as well as making sure that the code citations that are currently in the code are still applicable. We also added clarification and recommendations regarding the exclusion areas to identify Clear Lake as a public land and hold that line, the one thousand-foot buffer from seven point seven-nine or Full Lake, seven point seven-nine Ramsey. Just to add a little better clarity. One of the goals of the task force, as asked by the board, is to um make these rules a little easier to understand for people who are trying to become permitted. And so additional clarity supports that effort. Also, most recently, there was discussion regarding the farmland protection zone and the required greenhouses re- within the farmland protection zone. So there were a number of meetings that were dedicated to this discussion. And the final recommendation of the task force is that instead of limiting it to those those delineated areas of the county that were part of that first ordinance that sh- that highlighted certain areas of the county, to switch over and include uh prime land, prime uh to use the the soils that are the the level of farmland importance that are put out by the state and include the prime farmland, unique farmland, farmland of local importance, and farmland of statewide importance. So that would drastically increase the amount of area that is considered or that would be considered farmland protection zone. But through further discussion, the task force came back and said, instead of a greenhouse, which is a firm structure with walls and and uh is fully enclosed, hoop houses would be acceptable uh in use in farmland protection zone.
Can I ask you, and I I apologize, I got stuck on a thought. Uh, can you repeat that section about the farmland protection zone? Uh, you mentioned all of the different types of farmland, uh, but then went into the farm protection zone. Uh, are we, i- is it identified to keep the current areas that we've identified as farmland protection zone or to add land?
This would be an addition. It would include those that were already included because the they those focused on prime ag soils, the first four classes of soils in the farmland of uh farm, farmland of state importance. This would be an expansion of that. And that actually concludes my highlights, but we are more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
What's the thought behind expanding that into the other farmlands?
The discussion focused on protection of prime ag soils as well as soils that could be used for agriculture in the future. The my understanding of that previous ordinance was to minimize the potential for conflict between um cannabis growing and its terpenes and agriculture and its pesticides um or other sensitive areas. So that my understanding is that was why the farmland protection zone was originally established. I wasn't here during that time. And so the conversation, uh, that I missed the main one, but it it seemed to focus on if we're going to protect those lands, we do have additional soils that also need to be uh protected or or where the the interaction, the negative interaction between the two industries should be minimized. And that was the thought behind expanding um to those additional areas. Unfortunately, our Rebecca is not here for that today, but but Jennifer's here if you wanted to um add anything that I might have missed.
I have just have a follow-up question. Are there instances where this is an issue? Or are we having conflict?
We have not received, did not come up um in the the meetings where I was uh there. A number of theoretical possible conflicts, that was definitely dis- discussed.
So um I don't have, and I'm sure I can even find it because I think it's still in our um Article twenty-seven that's posted online. Uh, the original intent was if your, whatever it is, prime farmland, uh, farmland of importance, whatever the category it was, if it was part of a greater network of farmland, then you weren't supposed to grow outdoor. If you were isolated or whatever other term, then you were allowed to grow outdoor. The problem is the interpretation of that paragraph was so misinterpreted that we were seeing things happening in Big Valley where that should never have been interpreted as not being connected to a larger uh farmland environment. And so that's why we went to the mapping to identify. And because at that point, it was a little messy, there were things popping up everywhere all around, we identified, working with uh Brenna Sullivan at the time at the Farm Bureau, what are the areas we really, really want to protect rather than trying to really make a mess out of a mess? And so we did not add um, like, for example, the South Lake area. We did not add the High Valley area, but we definitely did Upper Lake, Scotts Valley, and uh Big Valley area. And so it wasn't about soil protection. It was the interaction of um potential interaction, uh, conflict between other farmlands that uh were already active with other types of products and trying to really help identify so in the future you use the map and not an interpretation of a paragraph. And so that that was the purpose behind that. And and just for my own personal comment, it's weird to protect farms from another farm for soil changes like that, that 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 just to me is a a weird concept, but I'll just remain there.
Thank you. We did receive um input from farmers and ranchers in the South County area that uh regarding them being left out of that initial mapping. So that was part of the conversation as well, but I appreciate that context.
Yes, I had noticed that um it's included, the cannabis growth, it looks like it would be also be included in APZ, ag preserve?
Land, that's correct.
Okay, and there's tax benefits with that particular zoning, which is meant to help the mainstream stream agriculture industries. And I don't know that that would be a good fit for this particular um type of agriculture.
So the lands that are within APZ at one time were within active Williamson Act contracts.
Yes.
And it applies both to prime ag soils, those first four classes of soils, as well as rangeland and grazing land. Um, so some of the rangeland and grazing land might be included within those additional classifications, but not necessarily uh because the the grazing doesn't require necessarily the prime ag soils or the other soils. I thank you for your input.
Well, what I'm more concerned about is the tax breaks, that we're not getting the full tax.
The Williamson Act contracts are automatically renewed every year unless either the property owner requests a cessation of that contract or um as was done in two thousand fourteen, uh thirteen, the board directed staff to review all properties within active Williamson Act contracts and to file or to record notices of non-renewal for those that were not in use for commercial agriculture uh due to the fact that in two thousand eight or ten, the state stopped doing subvention funding, which was how the loss of property tax from Lake County was uh supplemented by the state funds. That has not happened since at least two thousand ten, and we do not anticipate that funding returning from the state. So the board has been protective of the Williamson Act contracts that are active and are continued to be used for commercial agriculture, but um that number is decreasing. However, lands with that have now um aged out of Williamson Act contracts and are are at regular um tax levels, that does not automatically change their zoning. So you will find a number of properties in Lake County that are zoned APZ but are not within the Williamson Act contract and do not realize those property tax savings.
Right, um, just a quick question. You stated there were roughly four projects, like every two or three months, something like that. With the list of outstanding or dormant permits that have, like, aren't progressing or could progress, you mentioned something about the DCC thresholds that they use and that you that possibly would be an ideal thing to do is to follow that. How many of the outstanding or dormant permits would fall off in that situation?
We have, we have approximately between sixty and seventy pending use permits, and I would say um about half of those would be closed should we follow that procedure that the DCC does have enacted.
Historically, we have taken uh those stagnant projects, not not pre-cannabis. We've taken stagnant projects to the Planning Commission for Denial Without Prejudice to just sort of clear it off our books. If we were to um, if we were to able, if we were to add the ability to recognize these stagnant projects prior to working on them further, it would it would help uh internal department efficiencies.
Is it like taking time for someone to follow up each month or each, like, that's like on their task list to try and call or do something in regard to it when it's dormant?
Yes.
Okay.
It would help to clear our books as well and have more accurate reporting regarding um how many active permit applications we have.
And then I, then you, also I'll go ahead with Vice Chair, and then I'll go back to you.
Sorry, the twelve permit limit, was that uh a capacity setting for?
Yes.
Kind of keeping a handle on it with staff?
Yes, at that time, a number of other jurisdictions were taking, um, were opening up their doors for cannabis permits and were drowning. And so the board was sensitive to that with staff resources and use that as a way to sort of keep the stream slow, continual, but but at a manageable level so that we wouldn't have high staff turnover.
Thank you.
So I apologize, I might uh take a little longer than most would prefer. Uh, but I'm going to go over a lot of the items that you uh identified. The expiration date for water board, at at this moment in time, I am not interested in opening the door full swing. Uh, we kind of did a little bit of an experiment, granted, many other counties did as well. Our farmers who are engaged in cannabis growing are struggling. Uh, to me, opening the door is basically, it's it's not, there's no benefit that I can gauge from that uh from the county perspective or from the farmer perspective. Uh, so I I would love to keep that expiration date until we recognize exactly the total impacts, especially, um, I think it was more our tax collector that let us know how much is actually active that's being grown versus what's been approved. And so I think that we need to really be patient in recognizing the impact of what we've already done at this point in time. You mentioned odors, and I think one of the biggest issues uh is definitely setbacks from houses. I think the current one, I thought it was a little bit less, I thought it was one fifty, uh, but you said two hundred. Uh, that's still not enough. And and so I would like to see that, if if it's your own property and it's your own grow site, that's that's on you, you you can make the kind of decision you want. Uh, but impacting your neighbors, um, and I mean, I'm going to say something that might infuriate some, but one of the uh zones that we allow this to be done on is rural residential, which kind of doesn't make sense, like, I I don't think we should probably have a hog farm on a rural residential because that means most likely we have people living there. I think if certain types of farming creates a certain type of odor, I don't care if you're growing lavender or whatever else, um, maybe we should be thinking about setbacks for that type of farming activity that does create an odor. Uh, we had a a incident that we were here, that we uh approved the denial of a project for, I think it was sours. It bothered me that people who lived in a highly agriculturalized area were complaining about agriculture. Uh, I want to try to figure out how to separate that so that agriculture doesn't even eventually get pushed out because people are saying, well, it smells, well, cows smell, uh, farming smells. And at one point, we need to make sure that we do it correctly, uh, whether it's through zoning, through the general plan update, whatever the case might be, to really allow farming to be farming and not people to slowly expand uh a- and make changes to what farming uh is because it just, it it is what it is. You mentioned uh RVs, and then you mentioned using as office space. I would prefer portable buildings, like a school type of thing that looks a little bit more professional and not like you're actually going to be living in it. So I I don't know if there's a way to differentiate between the two because they're definitely things on wheels, buildings on wheels, but it would be nice to be more towards what we already are used to seeing in our communities. Uh, the farm labor contract permit upfront, absolutely, let's make things as simple as possible, make sure everybody's on the up and up. The twelve applications per month, I hesitate right now to make a change to that just because it depends on what the final changes will be. If there's something like, for example, if we have a board that says, let's get rid of the expiration date, then I think we probably need to keep the twelve just to make sure that we are able to manage the influx of applications we get. So it really depends what we do and how we change things. Cannabis density and cultivation sites, that one's really hard so many years down the road. Because the last thing I want to do is put a whole lot of grows into non-conforming situations. I think we have to figure out how to manage within what we have. The opt-out, reduce, uh, I don't know about the deadline. All I know is I I would prefer that that remain. I hate the idea of asking anybody to pay taxes on something that they're not actually doing. I don't think we're asking for taxes based on a permit. I think we're uh a- asking for taxes based on an activity. Uh, so I hope that we can keep that in there. I know it's kind of a pain. But maybe there should be, maybe there should be a fine if you're not in time for telling us that you're going to reduce or opt-out. That way, we can really get people to conform.
Yeah, and if we can add that deadline, it does help staff so we're not scrambling, both us and the tax collector's office. So that was just to add a little more um formality to what had started as an internal um policy.
Site reclamation bonds, I just was curious, do we do that for other types of activities? And I'm get, I I'm jumping from one very specific type of uh uh practice farming to like, do we do that for gas stations where there's a site reclamation bond? Uh, not that it's the same thing, but like, do we do that for anyone else remotely close?
Our mining projects do include that.
Yeah, but is cannabis growing a mining project?
Geothermal.
Okay, I I just, to me, there's a huge separation in in that, and uh we can find them for code enforcement if they don't clean up their stuff, but uh if they don't clean up their stuff, but they're not supposed to be throwing gasoline on the ground. So I just, I feel like that one is a push of
She wants to
Yeah, just this on this one. So it's in the farmland and protection zone where we've got greenhouses and concrete slabs that are on valuable soil that once those projects are abandoned, then you're left with something that's more difficult to remove or costly to remove, so it can't go back into agriculture use. That's the problem.
That was also the main reason why the recommendation of allowing hoop houses came from the task force too, because they were grappling with the logic of putting down foundations for the purpose of preserving prime ag soils. So that's why they negotiated that one.
And I could be wrong, but I feel like we have packing sheds that are probably on prime farmland in the first place as well, and those are on very large concrete pads. And I get it that those are also kind of issues because many are no longer in activity and we're trying to figure out what to do with them, but I don't, I that one, I guess I haven't figured out yet. Clear-cut definition of canopy, yes, I have seen it where you guys are looking at one plan and saying, that's a four by four. Are you going out to measure each year to make sure they didn't go above and beyond each one? And so it just, to me, that that becomes weird. I'd prefer it be a rectangular area. I believe that's the way the state does it. I believe that's how you identified the state measurements, and I think that would be the best and let the farmer figure out, how many plants can I put in this rectangular area, not each plant is four by four and I get to place them wherever I want and then call that an acre even though it's really three acres. So just, I would prefer it be very specific like that. I do want to add the property owner somewhere within the application. If we have bad actors and the property owner is inviting further bad actors to do activities on their property, that it's harder to sell your property and start over from scratch than it is to just get a different applicant to fill out something and continue to be involved with bad actors who are on the property trying to make a buck. So I would love to see the property owner be involved.
That is consistent with the task force recommendations and in fact, have that approval updated annually.
And I'm getting towards the end of my comments here. Background checks, permities, that's a state law already, so let's definitely continue that. For employees, I know some are already using a loophole that it says employees and not contractors, so when they're contracting out for folks coming in, I personally, I just care about the permities. I would hope that any business would want to be successful so they're not going to hire people who are going to rip them off and do bad things. The transferance of ownership, I was a little weirded out by what you said, that you want to walk through new owners of their conditions of approval. I don't think we do that for any other transferring of other types of properties. I think if you want to get involved, you should get knowledge and you should ask questions and you should get to know those things. I don't want to see your time being used unless you're going to get paid for it to sit down and walk these conditions of approvals through. That should be part of any business owner should know that they have rules and regulations they need to follow. I definitely would love to just keep the farmland protection zone as is and not add more. I think that would complicate a lot of things. One thing that you did not mention that is something that I made a promise and I have failed to uphold that promise from a very long time ago, we talked about thirty-two ninety road standards and what we walked away with our resolution saying basically what the state law says, that cannabis is ag because it's an ag product based on state law, that they would be able to meet the thirty-two ninety code of ag standards. We do not have an ag road standard. We made a promise to our fire districts that we would come back and eventually have an ag road standard. There was a copy of a given to us by NAPA. NAPA has ag road standards. It's basically like driveway standards, gravel standards, but at least it creates a standard and not just a random, we're going to call this a road and it we're good to go because we're ag, we can do whatever we want. That's something that we did put in writing in our resolution when we did the thirty-two ninety decision, and it's something that I would still love to see for us to follow through since we made some promises to our fire districts.
Thank you.
Did you want to have Jennifer, did you want to state anything before I open it to the public or anything?
I think one of the things that's important to note is these are recommendations that are going to come to you from a group of people that represents the industry, agriculture, concerned citizens, the fire department was involved. And so there's a wide variety of people that have participated in this over two-year process, and we've really met in the middle on ninety-nine percent of the topics. The one that you're going to see a lot of commentary on is this expansion of the farmland protection zone. You know, we do have to meet a quorum, and some days those quorums are met favorably to one side or the other. And I know that from the cannabis perspective, we're hoping that there's a lot more conversation on this subject because it ultimately takes out a large number of existing projects would become nonconforming, and it prevents a lot of land that's not going to be able to be used for cannabis. And in the end, you're going to see some, you know, farmers are not going to be able to change their crops and it's going to discriminate against their ability to earn revenue. You know, if they want to change their crops to a more profitable revenue, they're not revenue stream which might be cannabis, they're not going to be able to do that. So I think we need to look at that, and I think we need to look at, you know, are we regulating civil discourse and is it our place to do that? Thanks.
All right. What I'll do is I'll open it up to the public, and if you'd like to come up and comment on this item on the agenda, please come up and state your name, and we'll give you three minutes. Come up after her.
Hi. Supervisor, I do have a presentation for LCCA that I thought we're going to be able to to present today on the sort of the status of cannabis in the county.
That's right, you did state that.
Yes.
Can I let Patrick speak real quick before you do that?
Yes, please. I have it on the thumb drive and I emailed it as well, so I don't know.
Okay. I know Patrick had his hand up, and I didn't realize that before you came up. Go ahead, Patrick.
Okay, thanks for the opportunity to speak on this. Patrick Sullivan, Treasury Tax Collector. So first, I want to thank Marea and CCD for inviting me to be part of a few of those task force meetings where it covered some of the issues that were important to our office. I did want to touch on those. One of the concerns that came up from us was the property owner not being on the application or permit. We did try to work with some of the comments from the task force about potential workarounds for that, which I think are reflected here, which talk about getting the landowner approval. But as we've continued to work through this over the last few months, I feel like our office still has those original concerns. One of our concerns is that these permits, as pointed out, do run with the land. In some ways, these are not quite a license, they're not quite a permit, they're in the normal sense, they continue on with the owner. We're already having situations where there are foreclosures and auctions and sales where people are acquiring the property, and I don't know whether they never anticipated acquiring the property, whether they wouldn't otherwise qualify to hold this permit. Sometimes I think that may be due to their prior history. But as the property changes over, it's presented a lot of confusion for us over liability. And one of the concerns about property owners not being on here is that it sometimes it feels like there's an effort to evade liability or evade background checks, which are not necessarily included now for property owners. It's a huge loss of time for staff in our office as we try to work through this. Sometimes we get notices for bankruptcies or or other legal matters where the name on the bankruptcy or the filing we get from whatever agency it is is not reflected anywhere in county records because we don't even really know who's behind the operation. And so I was going to show to share, this is a graphic that we did. We walked through one filing we got as an example to kind of demonstrate the difficulty that we're having and raising the issue. So in this case, we received a filing for Titan Valley Land Holdings, which we didn't know who they were, we didn't have a record of them in our tax roll, but we had to do research basically on publicly sourced documents to identify that. And ultimately, Titan Valley is associated with Diamond Jay Ranch. That's the site that the cannabis grow or proposed grow is actually under. They are working with Great Kind Farms, who holds the cannabis discharge permit with Titan Valley because the state requires that both the applicant and the property owner be on that permit. So Great Kind Farms is actually under Valhalla Legacy with these people under it. Titan Valley is controlled by Terra Firma with these folks over it. But then it was also confusing for us because all the financial backing for the property came from a different entity, which was Art Consciousness Church. They were the lien holder, they put up the money, they have everything secured against the crops, whatever's harvested. But then when we were trying to understand if they were involved in the discharge permit, that led us to this other water board permit, which looked like it was for a different site. So the reason I'm sharing this is just to demonstrate the confusion that this causes in some of our county departments when we have to essentially start from scratch because we don't have a clear picture of who's behind it. The corporate structure we see with cannabis is often different than what we see with other entities. There's a lot more corporations and LLCs. The layers within layers within layers is not something that we often encounter with others. Sometimes these layers kind of lead to a dead end for us. And I guess from from our office's perspective, if the property owner is ultimately supposed to be liable, if when there are foreclosures or auctions, if the property owner is going to acquire this permit because it runs with the land, it just seems like it makes the most sense for them to actually be on it. I understand there are concerns from task force members that some property owners don't want to be on it, or some property owners may not qualify, and I'm sensitive to that. But I guess I just want to highlight that it was a problem for us before, and I believe it would remain a problem even, you know, with the recommendation that's given by the task force now. So we wanted to share that information so your board has it as it considers how to proceed.
Thank you, Pat. And so we're prepared to move forward with the cannabis task force.
The recommendation will be slightly edited just to make sure that it stays directly connected to the agenda item.
Yes, so if if you could skip to slide five, the first four slides do give a snapshot of the overview of where cannabis is at, I thought that might be helpful. Good afternoon, by the way, Chair Crandall and members of the Board of Supervisors. Welcome to our new our new members, and my name is Nora Dalbaka. I'm the current president of the LCCA, and I also am the cannabis industry representative appointed to the task force. So I am going to, like I said, skip those first four slides and talk a little bit about why the cannabis members appointed to the task force voted against the expansion of the FPZ. This is an agricultural county, and cannabis is agriculture. Cannabis is an effective absorbent of CO2, two to three times actually more than capturing greenhouse gas emissions than average trees. It's been shown as a as a biouptake plant, cannabis has been shown to improve soil health for subsequent crops, and cannabis farmers invest substantial capital in soil health improvements regarding environmental preservation and preservation of that very special ag land. Cannabis cultivation in the current county regulations has a twenty to one acreage allowance or five percent lot coverage, which is significantly less than requirements for every other traditional ag use in the county. That expands the open space and allows for native species and and keeps the usable area more concentrated. So there's because of the higher revenue per acre, it allows agricultural property owners to diversify and realize more from less development. Decreased acreage also results in lower water use. And I will say that both California and Lake County do consider cannabis an agricultural product. Could we go to the next slide? So one of the really great things that came out of of our collaboration on the task force was that in two thousand twenty-three cannabis was included in the crop report for the very first time, and that's really exciting. We have just two hundred nineteen acres right now that's planted compared to the eleven thousand for grapes, but in a production of about between at least a thousand to maybe up to several thousand pounds per acre, it's actually quite a large cash crop for the county. In addition, cannabis is the only agricultural product that is does have an additional tax on it, and so that does bring revenue into the county. All right, let's go to the next slide. The task force over the last two and a half years has updated the zoning chart, which passed through the Board of Supervisors. Retail concerns in the process was addressed. Drying structures and hoop house language was adopted and approved. The problematic early activation program was managed and ceased, and we assisted in rewriting the policy to come into alignment with the California Department of Cannabis Control, which is the state body that regulates cannabis, in addition to adapting to the changing state statutes, which the California legislature does continue to adopt new new language every year. This will, as we continue to do this work, it will assist the CDD in streamlining applications and get rid of some conflicting language or contradictions that exist between the current code and the state code. All right, next slide, please.
No, actually, what took place was Director Turner told me they would be giving a presentation, and then they were asked to shorten it to accommodate for what's on the agenda and the task force alliance, or not the task force alliance, I'm sorry, the task force itself items. Yes, yes.
So just a couple of concerns about the current direction of the task force. In the last six weeks of the year, a vocal minority of anti-cannabis residents are attending task force meetings and have pushed through this farmland protection zone expansion, and this has led the task force to push to make recommendations that disregard the cannabis industry stakeholders, the Board of Supervisors, the task force's own mandate and vision statement, and the people of Lake County who overwhelmingly voted to support cannabis several times. This does pose long-term risks that we've identified. It's a negative impact on landowners' rights and property values. It's a disruption to the cannabis business and local economic growth. It's a deterrence of future investment in the region, and there are potential conflicts with the existing plan. And then we'll go to this last slide here, and I will I will wrap up quickly. Cannabis right now has only two seats on the task force, and that's of the currently we have eight members, it'll be going down to seven, but two out of seven. And there's just no other industry-based task force that could or would be asked to function with this kind of lack of representation. And that has led to this initiative that expanded the farmland protection zone, and that was that was already discussed, so I'll skip those four. But the impact of that proposal was never discussed. We asked for the fiscal impact, and we asked for the impact on on current projects. We have now looked at what that what that might be, and conservatively, fifty-nine of one hundred sixty-two of the licensed farms in Lake County would be detrimentally affected. And it could, even even with our approved projects, this could be really problematic and and could prevent their operations upon lights, operations continuing when they go for license renewal. Farmers risk losing the right to farm on properties they've spent years improving, and and landowners wouldn't be able to diversify their crops if they decide that grapes aren't selling a lot this year. We want to rip out an acre and we want to put in some cannabis, there's that that ability wouldn't be there, and that that can really harm some of our our local landowners here. The fiscal, economic, and environmental impact in the county would be chilling, and it would also potentially give a big welcome sign to unlicensed cannabis because the stronger licensed cannabis is, the weaker the unlicensed and criminal growers are. So I will close there so that I don't take up too much time, but we would like to see better representation from the cannabis industry on the task force, and thanks for your time.
Okay. Now, I just have to say this. Now, I just have to say this because I know that in the presentation you mentioned something about anti-cannabis folks coming, or whatever the case may be. Whether that's the case or not, I mean, there needs to be all voices heard. I know that some folks that have reached out to me have stated that they're not anti-cannabis. They just have issues and concerns and whatnot. And so I think when there's, when there's a thought that this might be, you know, like there might be a bias, I mean, that type of statement gives the impression that there is. So I know that when we started this whole process, for me, I did want to have, regardless of who was appointed, I really wanted both sides of the spectrum on there so that it could be a really healthy debate regardless of it. I think when we get to a point where, you know, some folks can go one way or the other, like you said, people don't show up and it becomes a vote one way or the other, and that gives this type of situation. So I don't know, I just wanted to make that statement because I heard it said in the, in the presentation, but that's really all it. Just wanted to make a comment.
Absolutely, and I think we were doing really excellent work in finding that middle ground for about two and a half years, and this, these, this has really just been in the last like month or so that we've seen this sort of negative energy coming in towards, towards staff and task force members and that kind of pressure. And I say anti-cannabis just because of the impact of what these recommendations would do, which is to shut down a lot of the grows that are, that are existing and operating and doing so lawfully in the county. But yeah, I appreciate that, thank you.
Any comments or questions about the presentation? Was there anything else you wanted to add? All right, so we'll open it up to public input and come up, and sir, you raised your hand.
My name is Bill Wilson, and one of the problems I have is I don't feel like the county is really listening to the public. I've probably got 25 emails I've sent back and forth to the county, and I don't get any response, and maybe something gets forwarded back and forth. But my big concern is that I think people aren't looking at the harm. They talk about odor, but odor is the problem. Odor is the one, the terpenes have the toxic chemicals. There's no other industry that can produce toxic chemicals and not be protected. An outdoor growth, if you have an acre, you've got 20,000 plants on there, all 18 feet tall, eight feet diameter, producing terpenes which create ozone. Ozone harms photosynthesis. It hurts plants, it hurts people's lungs, it's a bad thing. If we're indoors and we're filtered, air scrubbers, and nothing gets out, that's okay. What I'm against is outdoor grows of a huge scale that are producing this huge amount of terpenes that turn into groundhugging ozone that will travel for hundreds and hundreds of feet. And I've got the U.S. Forest Service, I've got California Air Resources Board, EPA, they all are saying that how harmful ozone is, and cannabis creates ozone. When you have hot summer days and cool, I mean, and calm days and hot days with the terpenes, there's also mercene is another chemical in there that is listed as a cancer by Proposition 65, but the cannabis people aren't supposed to be posting that yet, they probably will. My concern is the health and not being listened to. I have submitted several papers for public comment. Whether they're read or not, I have no idea, but it's a health thing for me. And an outdoor grow of a huge acre or more produces so many tons of toxic chemicals, and ozone is the biggest. Ozone hurts plants, it hurts grapes, it hurts people, it hurts animals. If you have a thousand-foot setback and you've got animals in there, they're still going to have respiratory problems because of the groundhugging ozone. So I think we need to address the health thing, not just the economic thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I know if you've submitted, sir, if you've submitted like any letters or comments to the board or anything on an agenda item, it's definitely on record. So I'm not sure if that's what you're referring to, but again, thank you for making your statement here because it's on record. Sir, so from here forward, if anyone's going to talk, can they come back to the microphone? I've allowed it a couple of times.
I have a question. Did you, when were those sent in recently or in the past? Because I have not seen them.
Bill Wilson, excuse me?
When were your letters submitted?
Well, I've been submitting them since 2023, 24.
Okay. Would you mind resubmit?
I just submitted to Mr. Rasmussen, and he's the only one that's ever gotten back to me. I thank you very much for that.
Yeah, I would like to see them as well, please.
They're in the task force under public comment. I submitted to them.
Great, so just submit them again, and then we'll confirm that with you, okay? And then we have a new supervisor here.
According to the email, I send you all whether they went through. Yours didn't come through, instead, the address wouldn't take it.
Okay, so we'll get that fixed, and that way you can get it to her. Thank you, all right.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Good afternoon, Angela Emerald. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know mostly, is that better? Can you hear me now? All right. I know there's a couple of new supervisors up there. I don't know if you guys have received a letter from CAP. We will resend it, but I just wanted to highlight a couple of things.
It's attached.
It's attached, okay. I just wanted to make sure everybody had a chance to read it. But just to make clear, we've been attending the task force meetings and providing input prior to each meeting in response to the agenda. We, a lot of our members have been attending since day one. We are not just a group that came out of nowhere. One of the things, just a couple of things that Supervisor Sabatier brought up about the deadline. The deadline was brought to the Board of Supervisors in 2024 by Patrick Sullivan, that you guys approved the deadline for June, so there is a deadline. The site look reclamation bond was another request because there is no requirement to have a property owner as an applicant. And so, as Patrick alluded to, they run into an issue when it comes time, when the perma T packs up and leaves, the property owner is left with, the permit goes with the land. I just wanted, another thing was generators, FPZ, we can go into all of that, but tree removal. Maria, you stated there was stronger wording. There was a presentation provided by the Autobahn Society that was very informative. They, the recommendations by the Autobahn were not, not taken into consideration. We were told that it should be a countywide ordinance. It should be, it's a countywide issue, not just cannabis. So that's the way a lot of these things, we've been told, that they're countywide issues, and it needs to be addressed by the county as a whole. One thing I'd like to ask is that CAP has sent correspondence regarding potential conflicts of interest. We would like to request a response from the Board of Supervisors or County Council regarding this issue. Also, the issue of Rosenberg Rules of Orders, which we understand is the county's policy for committees and the consistency of following those Rosenberg Rules of Order. So we would like clarification on the questions that we have been asking several times because we feel there are strong conflicts of interest and potential areas that need to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you think we're prepared to answer those now, or probably? Need some time on that.
Okay, just.
I can continue with public input and then come back. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Sarah Bodnar, consultant. I think I have sat in on nearly every task force meeting since the group was formed. And, you know, going back to that time when it was formed, we were really struggling to work on the cannabis ordinance, and especially here in open session, you know, in the limited time. And I think the cannabis task force has provided a much-needed and largely successful venue to sit around the table and work through the details, the details of what it means to actually own and operate a cannabis business, and also the details of what it means to neighbor and live with cannabis in our community. And, you know, this was a really rapid-fire overview that was given today, and there's a lot more work that's been done that I look forward to the day where we kind of work through all the recommendations and the board is giving more input. I understand that today is just an update, and there are a couple of comments I wanted to make as we head into a new year about what our goals are. And I pulled up the vision from the cannabis ordinance task force, and I wanted to read it out loud. "The County of Lake cannabis program is dedicated to the pursuit of a successful, sustainable, vertically-integrated, compliant, and thriving cannabis industry that supports job growth and economic prosperity while balancing the needs and the preservation of the unique ecological environment of the county, our historical and prehistorical cultural resources, the existing agricultural establishments, and the communities of the county. Together, we can succeed with clearer guidelines and expectations of the known and unknown challenges we face both now and in the future." It's an enormous vision, and, and it's a complicated one. And I think with our eyes trained on that, which is what we want to see happen here, we have some big questions we have to wrangle with in the coming year. As an active participant in the task force who's helping move projects and policy forward in the county, often, a couple of practical things. We're having a really hard time reaching quorum right now. There's been some, you know, seasonal interruptions with people's travel and whatnot, but we've also had some members consistently not participate or decide they no longer wanted to participate. And I think it may be up to this board to take up the issue of how we can populate a robust task force. I want to echo something that Nora said, that any other special committee that's formed around an industry usually has more representation from that industry on it. And I think we could benefit from having different operators of different kinds representing the vertical integration of this industry here, more seats for cannabis and more seats just in general so that we can reach quorum, and possibly some attendance guidelines if it's the will of the board, so that we can keep the good work moving. If we can't meet, we can't get anything done. So those are some practical comments. It has been difficult.
Thank you.
I'll close there. Thank you.
I thought he was coming up.
I'm Peter Lucetti. I presented earlier today. You know that I'm from South County and I'm involved in cattle ranching. I'm also one of the founding members and leaders of the Community Action Project. We are not a rogue organization. The Community Action Project is a group of citizens who, Angela just indicated, have been calling on this COTF for two years, three years or more, and have been very involved in the process. We're now getting organized, we're forming a 501(c)(3), and we're planning on drawing in more public participation than you've seen in the past to stand up and be a voice that I think is a constructive voice in cannabis, among other things, the Lake County 2050 Plan in Lake County. We are not anti-cannabis. I repeat that. We are not an anti-cannabis organization. What we are is a pro-constructive public policy organization. And I'll start with this, this is directed at County Council. I think what just happened here, it violates the Brown Act. This presentation was not publicly pre-noticed, was accepted into the agenda and should not have been, was made on the part of an organization that is representing cannabis, which is fine. It went on for seven minutes, not three minutes, actually eight minutes and 42 seconds. So that's not, that's not okay. It's a violation of the Brown Act. Now, I will say this, since it happened, CAP is asking to make a rebuttal for equal time at the, at the, at the boards of convenience. We would like an opportunity to rebut for equal time. Then you can learn more about our perspective, not just in the three-minute limitation that I have here. Couple of other comments. The governance of CAP is fouled up. It's not following, as Angela said, Rosenberg's Rules of Order. It is not, and it is really fouled up. I've been in meetings where I saw votes challenged inappropriately and against due process and the rules of fiduciary responsibility. I also believe we have issues with Fair Political Practices Committee participation in the task force. So I am an advocate, as we said in our letter, of disbanding the task force and starting over. And I'm 100% an advocate of including the cannabis industry, wholeheartedly embracing the cannabis industry and forming successful policy for Lake County, not a failed policy. And I'll close by saying what we have today is a failed policy. Failed policy. Over 80% of the acreage is not growing anything. The tax revenue does not, in my opinion, cover the expenses. Now, I'll make that case for you if you give me equal time, and that's what I'm requesting. Thank you.
Good. So your board has the discretion to provide time to, historically, your board has provided public comment within three minutes. That's pursuant to county policy. The presentation that was made that went over three minutes, that's under the, under the, or incorporated as part, as I understand it, as part of community development's presentation, which has then been truncated to make it tailored and narrowed in scope to relate it to the agenda item that's before your board, which is just the presentation. So your board certainly has the discretion that typically, historically, your board has provided more, more time, more minutes to the presenter in, for this type of agenda item, which is just a presentation, an informational presentation to your board. Everybody else is, as far as public comment is concerned, your board pursuant to policy has, has narrowed it or relegated it to three minutes, three minutes per speaker. Not aware at this point of the, of the reference to Rosenberg's Rules of Order, but I would direct the board to the county policy again, and it's Appendix C of the, of Chapter One of County's Policies and Procedures as it relates to county advisory boards, commissions, and committees. They follow Robert's Rules of Order. It's been cited there. The provisions are cited there on Robert's Rules, not Rosenberg's.
And then another question, for this, for this task force, was there, the applications, there was a document, and I'm not sure if when this committee was, or this ad hoc was formed, I know that we implemented a conflict of interest document at one time or another. Was that, I don't know if that was included with this. I know that that took place at one time or another, but it might have happened after. It's on the application.
2022.
22, yeah. Okay. But I just know that we reformed it or readjusted it. I know that there was a document that it was enhanced, so. Yes.
The Rosenberg Rules of Order, isn't that the more current, kind of basically the same thing as the Robert Rules of Order, but it took place in 2022? So it's a more current update of the Robert's Rules of Order, I believe. And in that, I understand that it's because you can't have a conflict of interest and vote on an item in which you can financially benefit. I believe that that's what is being addressed here.
Rosenberg Rule of Order, it has been adopted into the bylaws of the Planning Commission because it serves, it's designed for boards that are of smaller size, like less than 50 people, where Robert's Rules of Order would be most commonly used. But I would defer to Lloyd regarding any standard format or rules of order that are used by ad hoc or committees, task forces.
Thank you.
I think the FPPC stuff that was alluded to earlier is a separate issue.
Okay, I was just, I know when I was doing research, I had read the Rosenbergs as well because that was, appeared to me to be the newer version.
Sir, would you like to come up?
Good afternoon, my name is Tom Lasik. I'm also a member of CAP. I wanted to point out sort of the good, the bad, and the ugly. My wife and I, we attend all sorts of county affiliated meetings across the, you know, all over the county around the lake, and for the most part, they run really well. They try to follow Roberts or Rosenberg. They take the Brown Act quite seriously. People are welcomed, there's a lot of dialogue, there's a lot of give and take. If you go there and you have a question or you want to make a point, there's a process that's followed. And my personal experience is that it looks like everyone, when they leave the room, they might not like the answer they got, but at least they were heard and they were respected. they might not like the answer they got, but at least they were heard and they were respected. That's sort of the good. The, the bad is that, with all due respect to everyone, the Cannabis Ordinance Task Force is sort of an outlier on that. You, this is supposed to have been a five-month project, and it's already in its 30th month. It was already mentioned that there's trouble making a quorum. Last year, over 44% of the meetings couldn't be held because nobody showed up, or not enough people showed up. About 15% had to be cut short because they didn't have the right documentation or right, you know, basic blocking and tackling and meeting management was just not there. I usually sit in the back and just listen and see what people have to say. Maybe occasionally ask a, you know, point of order or a question to Maria or someone else. And just as someone that's, you know, been in a lot of meetings, the meetings today, they're just not functional. And then we have the good, the bad, well, the ugly is, well, quite frankly, the meetings are toxic, and they've been toxic for years, as Angela's pointed out. The people have been in those meetings since the beginning. They have a better attendance record than anybody that's actually showed up that's on the task force. And if you're lucky, you're just ignored or patronized or treated condescendingly. If you're part of traditional ag, they'll mock you to your face. And if, if you have a concern about oak and it infects the cannabis industry, well, then you're anti-cannabis. You have an issue on groundwater? Well, you're anti-cannabis. And that just keeps going on and on and on. Now, the only reason they're upset now is, well, two reasons. One is, is that when issues that relate to the general public were of concern, they were told, you have to wait to the end. Well, now we're near the end, and now they want to be told. And now they're also forming a group, and they don't like it. It, it's not a healthy situation. It's not like anything else that's been running the county that I've seen. And it can't be done better. Just, and off that topic, I do want to point out a couple of things that Monsieur Sabathia had mentioned. And I live on a rural residential, so things like odor, I think his points are well taken. And there's some good ideas there. Just a final note, many of the ordinances that Director Turner read, I think do make sense. I think there are some good points there, and there are places of disagreement. But the way the thing is run right now, it's not healthy, and it doesn't represent the best of what this county could be. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, here comes somebody.
Hi, Holly Harris. Greetings and welcome, the new supervisors. I have attended the Cannabis Ordinance Task Force. I think I've missed two of them since the very beginning. And you have to have a long stomach to go through some of these. At the beginning, I really had high hopes for this. And then we're not, we're not anti-cannabis. As a matter of fact, we want to promote, I don't know how many times we've said this, we want to promote small farmers. We want to have local, you know, people that are thriving, just like all of our little communities, et cetera. We don't want the big corporations. We don't want the huge grows. We don't want 60 acres there. That's where the problems come in. At the beginning, I attempted to reach out when it wasn't really, when we were told that the, the public issues would be the last thing that would be discussed. I actually reached out to a couple of the LCCA and the cannabis members, and they never responded to me. Each time we've tried to bring up issues, many times they're ignored. They don't get, you know, we're marginalized a lot. And it's really hard to deal with it that way. I, I find the, the problem was that we didn't deal, we didn't talk about the public issues at the very beginning. If we had talked about what mattered to the public at the beginning, I think this would have already been done, and we would have had the ordinance already completed. But because of it, now we're getting it to the end, and we're having a small list of things that we were told were the final things that were recommended to be spoken about by the task force and the public and staff. And that's not true. I mean, I have huge amounts of things that are seriously a problem. And I don't try to, I don't make it a point of complaining per se. I try to offer solutions, but they don't get put into the record. In terms of this, this FPZ zone, you know, I have questions about it too. I'm not quite sure why there's such a huge fuss about it at the moment because they also voted to allow outdoor cultivation in hoop houses. We asked what happens about filtration systems, and we've been, I think, at least 12 times, and I think we've been ignored because the way it reads right now, they're allowed to grow in all of these FPZ zones in hoop houses without filtration systems, unless somebody can tell me otherwise. So there's a whole lot that really needs to be, you know, discussed and gone through, which isn't happening. And I just wanted to say, I would really like for us to come together somehow and get this fixed, you know, and, and have the community be incorporated into it. Thank you.
Sir?
Good afternoon, Chair Grandal, honorable supervisors. My name is Andrew Dobbs Kramer. I've been working in cannabis compliance for a little over a decade. And I've been involved in ordinance writing processes in many jurisdictions from different cities to different counties. And I've, I've been attending for about the last six or seven months these Cannabis Ordinance Task Force meetings. And I have to say, when I first began attending these, it was really refreshing. There was actually a spirit of community. I saw people meeting in the middle. I saw, you know, nobody was particularly happy about the outcomes, but everybody was equally unhappy, which I think is the sign of a good compromise. I've seen a, a market change in the last few months, you know, where, where before progress was slow, but it was happening. There was, you know, conversations were not always finished. Items were not always finished in one meeting, but people were concerted, working towards a goal. In the past few months, it really feels like there's been a turn. And, and it feels like there's been an effort, a concerted effort, to muddy the waters and add hurdles wherever possible for operators. Rather than the vision statement of aligning with state law and trying to streamline things for CDD, we've seen countless, kind of honestly frivolous suggestions that are really meant to just make things more difficult for operators. The perception that you've heard here today of CAP as an anti-cannabis group is, is not trying to name-call. It's based on the evidence and these repeated attempts to regulate cannabis out of the county. That's in many jurisdictions where there's not a ban. The, the solution by people who don't want cannabis is to simply add regulations until it's not financially, financially feasible to operate within that county and people go elsewhere. That feels like that's the recent turn that these efforts have taken. I also just want to briefly dispel the idea that terpenes are unique to cannabis or somehow new or, or something scary. Terpenes are any, any of a large group of volatile unsaturated hydrocarbons found in the essential oils of plants, especially conifers and citrus trees. That's a definition. I didn't come up with that myself. Mercin in particular is found in hops, lemongrass, mango, citrus, bay leaves, et cetera, and all kinds of agricultural crops throughout the county. So to act as though cannabis is some new, unique threat that's never been here before is simply unfounded. Moving forward, you know, we all want to, want to see progress here. I'm not here to harp on folks. The, the way to get this task force back on track is to fix the quorum issues, get industry representation, and keep doing the work. It's going to be challenging. It's going to take time. People are going to be frustrated. That's part of a good democratic process. Thank you for your time today.
Supervisor Sabatia?
Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm making a request that we stay on topic about recommendations and whether they like or not like the recommendations or any other recommendations, and not speak about the individuals within the task force. I just feel like that's leading us absolutely nowhere. And just, I, just making that request.
All right. Supervisor Owen, you had your pen up or?
No, I made a mistake.
Any other comments from the public? All right.
Good afternoon. Jim Comstock, longtime South County resident and rancher. We've been on our ranch for 82 years, and I've been there 75 of those. And welcome, Helen and Brad. Congratulations. Glad to have you here. And I sat there for eight years. I know what you're going through. I'd like to address the farmland protection zones. There are operators right now, grape growers, that are choosing to try to diversify some. Maybe it's, it is cannabis in some cases. And if some of this is inactive, they will not be allowed to diversify. Ag crops change over the years. Our ranch then had walnuts, pears, sheep, cattle, hay, and
Horses.
All of those. If we were not allowed to diversify, we wouldn't still be there. And cannabis is one of the diversification opportunities. That's, so I would, I would urge you to look very carefully at that. Every, if it's too restricted, the cannabis is not going to go away. If it's too restricted, you're going to have more illegal grows. I think most of you would remember Sheriff Brian Martin, who was here for years, and he said, every legal grow eliminates an illegal grow, which is, and I don't know if those numbers pan out, because there are an awful lot of illegal grows out there. But if they can be eliminated and handled under the strict regulations that cannabis is under, it serves society, the county, and our, our entire county well. So I urge you to look at those things and do not restrict it to the point that it is unfeasible or unable to be done. Thank you for your time, and once again, welcome to Brad and Helen.
Thank you. Sir?
Thank you, and supervisors. My name is Peter Simon. I'm one of the owners of the grow that we, we call Pasta Farm, which is outside of Kelseyville. It was a piece of property that had grapes. And I also, I'm also a grape grower in Lake County and in, in Mendocino County. The, the property before we moved it to cannabis was unprofitable grapes and had an abandoned walnut farm on it. The properties, the other grapes were growing. Next year, we've had to make the decision that we are not going to crop our grapes. We are going to have to basically prune them in such a way that we can't carry crop because it is so expensive right now for us to be able to grow grapes that we cannot viably farm them. The only way that we're able to continue to have this property is by continuing to grow cannabis on it. The cannabis that we have is now, one of the concerns that was talked about in this farmland protection zone was protecting the soil. The cannabis that we are growing on the area up at our, at our farm is improving the soil, not just for cannabis, but for any crop that comes after it. And that's not necessarily true for other crops because other crops, whether they're grapes or otherwise, use pesticides and fungicides. And that is going to impact the ability for other types of crops to grow. If somebody comes in afterwards on our farm, they're going to have a very clean and safe property. If the farmland protection zone is increased, not only will this county, I believe that the amount of taxes that we paid were 25% of the cannabis cultivation taxes in the county. As it stands right now, if the farmland protection zone is increased as it has been proposed, we will not get a renewal of our license when it comes due. And it is not something that is, that is going to benefit the county going forward. So I would, I would, I want, I'm going to get more involved and try to participate in the task force. I actually have already, I want to reach out and speak to, speak to and listen to the concerns of the various constituents because I don't fully understand them, and I do think that dialogue is necessary. But I do want you to be aware of the economic impact. And please take mind of the economic impact, not just short-term, but long-term when you're looking at these various propositions. Thank you.
Yes, right after Ms. Khan, and then you can go next.
Hi, Maria Khan. The site reclaimation, site reclamation bond, I think, is an excellent idea for the grows, in particular, prior to them even getting their licenses for the property. And I'm just going to go back to the one that started me all on this whole journey with Sowers, where they destroyed the land, didn't get their license, and abandoned the property, and now Brass Fields put about $2 million into restoring that property. So him, he as the new owner, had to pick up the ball and pick up all the refurbishing and fixing of the damage that that, that grow did without a license at all. So I, I think that you should probably consider something to get those bonds in place before they even get into the license process because some of them, not all of them, some of them jumped the gun and grade things illegally and do work that shouldn't be done before they even get permission to do so. So that was just my comment on that one. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next.
Jennifer Smith. Past president of the LCCA, member of the LCCA, local cultivator, and member of the Cannabis Task Force. A couple of things I want to talk about in some of the recommendations and the task force in general. I think we're hearing a gross misrepresentation of the temperature in the room. I feel that if all the task force members were here today, past and present, that they would let you know that it has been a very cordial and educational process. I do have some concerns when we're talking about wanting more discussion, but yet wanting us to maintain Robert's Rules or what's the other rules we're talking about today?
Let's go to the recommendations.
Yeah, what's that?
Let's stick to the recommendations.
Okay, so we can't have, all right. We're going to stick to the recommendations?
It, it's just, I, I know what you're, I think we know what you're going to say, and it's just becoming a back and forth, and I think supervisors-
Okay, I don't intend for it to be back and forth, but I just think that what we have done at the task force is valuable work, and I think that we need to continue it. And I need that we find, need to find ways to keep moving forward and engage everybody in the conversation, which can't be done the way it's structured right now.
Thank you. Is there any other public input? Okay. Can you unmute on Zoom and state your name for the record?
My name is Richard Durham. I'm a cultivator and a realtor and a consultant. I just want, we've changed this ordinance over and over and over. I've been going to supervisors' meetings for over a decade, and I've watched the evolution. And we always come back and have to change stuff. So I think we have to look a little bit into the future. When cannabis becomes nationally legal, it'll be really difficult to sell your cannabis out of the state of California if it's grown indoors because other states will have excise taxes on it. So we'll greenhouse cannabis because other states will have excise taxes on imported cannabis. So if we're looking into the future, the cannabis that we'll be selling in all 50 states would be full-term outdoor cannabis. And now we're trying to restrict it and put it into greenhouses, which is really going to lead a lot of growers to bankruptcy because they won't be able to sell their weed in the future. And as far as the farmland protection zones, I've lived in Lake County for 34 years. I've seen grapes, I mean, pears come and go, walnuts come and go, grapes come and go. And a lot of the protected lands are fallow. Nobody's growing anything there. And if you look at the size of a lot of these properties, they're 20, 30, 40 acres. Well, that's for conventional farming, that's a little small. And it would fit cannabis perfectly. And as far as full-term outdoor cannabis, it's been branded for 50, 60 years all over the country. It'll be a big boon to Lake County. And a lot of the old property owners who own the farmland or protection zone properties are, are just, they're not farming it because they just can't put a crop on there that they're going to make money. Cannabis would make money for these people, and these are the people who have actually inherited. These are, are the long-term residents of Lake County. And if you want to protect their property values, you should give them the opportunity to be able to grow cannabis on it. And with that, I'll let it go.
Thank you, Richard. Is there anyone else on Zoom? If you can unmute, state your name for the record and
Good afternoon, supervisors. Julia Bono here with the Rainbow Church of Living Light. Regarding something brought up by a previous presentation, I would also like to- I would also like to express my sincere concern over and complain about the vocal, rabid, uninformed, and vehemently polarizing minority of anti-cannabis crusaders-
So ma'am, we're only concentrating on the recommendations as of now. And we're not discussing that-
Yes, I'm getting to that regarding the farm protection zone.
Well, if you can comment specifically on that or some other-
Okay, I am. The end of this sentence mentions the farm protection zone. Because these people have insisted in over-talking and overtaking the Cannabis Task Force and the vocal majority of Lake County residents who support legal cannabis by campaigning to expand the farm protection zone to exclude legal cannabis farms. Their rather obvious lack of understanding of this important issue-
All right, so-
-not be allowed to take a safe, effective medicine-
All right, so ma'am, we're not even talking about-
...an excellent alternative to alcohol and tobacco-
Legislative, all right, we're going to have to just-
...or crop away from public access. Furthermore-
All right, and so I see one more person. So if you want to come up, Margot, I think it is. If you want to come up, state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, Chair Crandall, Vice Chair Rasmussen. My name is Margot Kambara. I have a comment to make about the task force recommendation concerning FPZ, you know, the farmland protection zone. Land use is where the county can put its money where its mouth is. What are our values? We are a poor, or shall I say, a financially challenged county. We have food insecurity. That's hard. We have an older population. We have, in our graphs, the means to try to tackle that food insecurity. We have food deserts. We're in ag county. Why don't we focus our resources to make a difference in that area? Protect our ag lands. It also buys us time to find some solutions. Outdoor cannabis has an odor problem. It's not just an inconvenience. It almost makes your living area unlivable because it's so overpowering. Right now, the task force has approved two conflicting recommendations. One, to expand the FPZ, and yet, cut the protections for FPZ. There is a problem right now with that incongruity. Because you're saying, well, if you're going to grow in FPZ, you can do it in a hoop house. Well, you can't run power to a hoop house, and there's no filtration. What are the, what about the neighbors? And what we're hearing from some of the industry people, if you throw up these roadblocks to the industry, well, then you're anti-cannabis. A lot of neighbors are not anti-cannabis. We moved to Lake County for the rural setting and the stunning natural beauty of the county. Are we wrong to not want to put up with cannabis odor? And then we're told, we don't count? You have to have, like, so many people complain about it before your concern matters. There's something wrong about that. So I think this definitely needs more discussion and more public input. And as some of the other citizens have said, a lot of us are concerned, but we're looking for solutions. And we're trying to offer solutions. And we appreciate your attention to this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, we'll go ahead and close public input. There's three more hands up? Okay. I thought that was the last one, sorry. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, yes, my name is Jessica Pender. And I've been in the county for 13 years. I've watched with the cannabis industry. And now I am watching it go down without the cannabis industry. We are conservationists. If you talk to any grower, we're naturalists. And our job is to be good stewards to the land. So this thing about conservating the land, actually putting in concrete, is going to destroy the natural microbes that live below it. And that, in return, will limit water that the land can hold when we get water. This is making me emotional. You say you're for the land? You want to put plastic in? You want to do things that disturb the land, make more landfill costs? You got to be kidding me. We are naturalists. We are rejuvenating the land. You need to think about what you're doing before you instate this. Thank you for taking your time to listen to the public. Because the public is what makes Lake County, Lake County. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we still have two more?
Hi there, Erin McCarick from Clear Lake, member of the LCCA, and been in the industry here in Clear Lake. And just wanted to support what the task force has been doing. And as has been said before, there has been a very moderate and balanced approach. Maria and her staff have really, really done a good job at bringing all voices into it. And so with the recommendations that they've given thus far, support them, you know, with the exception of the expansion of the farmland protection zone, echoing all the things that have been said before in terms of that. But also asking the board to look at it in a full-picture spectrum in terms of what cannabis does bring for, you know, tax dollars and industry. And also looking at it, as the board continues to hear recommendations from the task force and updates from the task force, to look at it also in a larger scope of distributors and retailers and manufacturers, nurseries, everybody who does have a voice. Because it really is integrated throughout our community. And if we don't have all those voices at the table, it's hard to really understand the impact to jobs and, you know, tax base from beyond just cultivation. And along that, as you listen to the recommendations and the updates from the task force, I would also see if the board has a contingency plan, if there continues to be a lack of quorum, and if there is any reason for lack of quorum. So, you know, just making sure, as was earlier in the board meeting, the firefighters have put in so much time to this. Everyone has put in so much time. So I think it's only honoring them if this task force continues to stay on track and the ordinance actually gets through. We don't want to see 2026 without a full ordinance, which is not good for anybody. Nobody can really plan with that. So thank you for your time, supervisors. Thank you, Chair Crandall. And thank you again to the task force. It really is a thankless, tiresome job. And so I ask that the board also sees it move forward.
And before that person starts, I know that's, okay. And then we'll, all right. Go ahead, if you can unmute.
Hello? My name is Carlos Bono. I first would like to, I'd like to congratulate our new supervisors. And I would like to say that I did a fact check, and I didn't see any evidence of the previous speaker's statement that cannabis itself creates ozone. Although ozone may be used by some growers as disinfection and odor control, it's a powerful oxidizing agent.
I think that was just based on someone else's statement. So if this is going to be about that, I don't think that's something we're going to talk about. But if you want to talk about the recommendations.
Okay. First of all, we do not approve of the proposed COTF and Board of Supervisors' recommendation to require use permits for a cabinet, retail storefront establishment in a C1 or C2-zoned business area. Instead, we request that the use remain a use by right that does not require any permit whatsoever in those zones. Already explicitly allow the sale of flowers and the type of product generally sold at cannabis retail storefronts consists of or is derived from cannabis flowers. We also ask that a minor use permit be required for such establishments in other zones. As far as background checks and other processes like fingerprinting for applicants and employees, that they be eliminated when applying for or renewing cannabis cultivation permits. We also request that prior relevant convictions not preclude the issuance of cannabis cultivation permits. We request that no county inspections be done without a one-week advance written notice being provided to the holder of a cannabis cultivation permit. And we request that commercial cannabis cultivation sites can be connected to public water sources. We request that commercial cannabis cultivation sites be allowed wherever commercial vineyards are allowed, without exception or extra setbacks. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so-
Just for clarification, because I brought it up earlier. So if county council, you guys don't have to give us an answer today about the conflict of interest. But if we could get a commitment to provide us a response within a week so that we can get over this issue, that would be quite helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we've, we can discuss that, Lloyd and I. What's that? I'll close public input, and I know you were first. And then Supervisor Sabatier.
So it's closed?
Yes.
I don't know how we got onto this farmland protection zone expansion, because that was not any direction from this board. So did that, how did this come about?
My understanding was that we should look at cannabis policy, which I took to mean all cannabis policy. So if that was not the will of the board, I'm more than happy to talk about something else going forward.
I mean, I have no desire to look at that again. We put a lot of work into it. I think it was right before I came on the board and a little bit after I got on. So that's several years old. You know, I feel like that's settled. We are seeing property owners, farmers, do crop rotation. And it's important that they have that flexibility in their land. One other point of clarification, just so that, there's been a lot of questions about this. Greenhouses are still required in farmland protection zone in Bay County.
No hoop houses.
No hoop houses.
At this moment.
Only greenhouses.
There have been no changes in the actual policy at this time.
Yes, I know. So some people had questions about that. I just want to be real clear. We have not made that change. It sounds like maybe there was some conflating conversations about adding hoop houses to expanded areas of the farmland protection zone. I don't want to do that. I want to give a really great example of where this crop rotation is really beneficial for the community. And that's the Monacristo Ranch that is above Clear Lake Oaks. And a lot of people in this room came to protest that grow. And those people are incredible farmers. They've had vineyards, blocks of vineyards all along the ridge there for 20 years. Stopped three fires, three fires. Mendocino complex, another fire. And then just recently, the Glen Haven Fire was held at bay by that green belt. And that green belt consists of blocks of wine grapes and cannabis intermingled. And it's not visible from below. It's not in a farmland protection zone. It is out of sight of everybody. Nobody even knows it's there, but it is meticulously managed and run. And those are the types of properties that we want. They're not losing their contracts for selling their grapes. Their grape buyers know exactly how much cannabis is grown in and around those grapes, and it hasn't affected anything. So there's always speculation out there. There's a lot of fear out there. But this has been an operation for several years now. There's a lot of great data to support that this is a successful project, not just for the landowner, the farmer, but also the community. And our fire protection districts love that project because they have a massive pond that they're always drawing from. So this is why I don't want to do any more restrictions than we have to. We're trying to build an industry that works for everybody. And there's a lot of public comment that is very helpful to shape our policies and our ordinances. And I'm glad that there's public participation. But let's not go overboard where we don't need to. And Peter's here, he has a really, really successful, wonderful project in my district. And I don't want to see that compromised by expanding these farmland protection zones. There's no reason for that. We're not talking about the quorum issues today. But if you feel like there's issues where we're not meeting quorum, we're going down a seat, so I hope that helps. But if, but bring it back, bring it back sooner rather than later if it's really starting to impact your work.
I think that going down to a seven-member body will be helpful. When we have had quorum issues, it has been reaching that fifth person. So we, getting four doesn't seem to be as problematic.
Okay.
And just so I have clarification on my notes going forward, you're against the expansion of FPZ areas. I didn't hear your position on hoop houses versus not.
I just wanted to make it clear, because it sounded to me like people from the public thought that hoop houses were allowed in farmland protection zone, and they're not.
Correct. None of the recommendations presented before the board today are actually in effect. Nor will they be in effect until the draft ordinance goes through its process and goes through public hearings from both the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors, and then has an extra 30 days to take effect.
Okay.
So these are only recommendations.
Okay, good. And then as far as, the greenhouses in farmland protection zone are causing problems, the abandoned ones. And I know we have big packing sheds. Those are also taking up valuable land space. So I would like to figure out a way that we could abate those if they're failed projects and there's no one to take them over. That, I feel like that is a big lesson learned from the farmland protection zone ordinance or language.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Just for those that have kind of talked to us today, I just, I think that we've had two separate organizations. One fairly new, one been around for a little bit longer. Thank you for organizing to have a unified voice, no matter what that voice is on this. Whether you arrived at the meetings late or early, I don't really think that should ever matter. Those meetings are there for anybody to go and express themselves. So please continue to do so. And the more we hear from everybody, the better off we are, even though there are some things that are a little in left field sometimes. I want to really harp on the property owner. I think that's one of the most important things. I appreciated Patrick Sullivan chiming in with some of the difficulties that he's having. Because yes, the end product, we know what that looks like. But the system and the infrastructure that some of these applicants have and the different corporations that are involved can get really complicated. And I want to make it as simple as possible. And I think the property owner simplifies that process a little bit. And I'm going to add something. And that's because of something that I saw one day for one of the applications. I also, I know our sheriff had reached out and granted, we don't have a law that prohibits these things. But anybody with a active warrant for cultivation should have their application placed on hold. And that should include property owner and anyone else. Right now, it's, if you're fingerprints, that means you've been convicted. I think that if our sheriff makes a statement that they have active warrants, we need to make sure to follow that. And it was on a property owner. And property owner is not somebody that we look at right now in our ordinance. And so it wasn't something that we can do anything about last time. But I know that was something that I promised myself we needed to make that change. Because if there is, it doesn't mean you're denied. It just means your application is placed on hold until we clear this up. Or if you're convicted, then at that point, you're no longer eligible to get a permit. But to me, it's important that we recognize active investigations as well as past behavior.
Just so I'm clear, what I hear you saying is the property owner doesn't necessarily need to be on the permit, but should be included in the application, which they are as acknowledgement of approval of the application. And you're also saying you'd like the property owner to go through a background check. And you're also saying that in addition to reviewing the many different ways the law says an application can be excluded, you would also like the Sheriff's Department in their review to take into account any active warrants, not necessarily actual judgments.
Related to cultivation, not just any warrants. Because that was, that was the example that I have. Is there were active illegal cultivation warrants for the property owner. And it made me realize a gaping hole that we have in our ordinance where I felt embarrassed that that's how the public saw us being able to proceed. Again, nothing on our rules and regulations that prohibits that or that even tells us that we can do anything about that. But I want to continue offering that we put that into action again. No denial, suspension until that warrant has been either cleared or there is a conviction. We have it already that if you've been convicted, since it's been- We have it already, that if you've been convicted, since it's been legal to get a permit, then you are no longer eligible because of your bad behavior when there's a door and an opportunity to do good behavior. And I think it's bad for the industry, for us, to allow those people through the door. And it's bad for us to allow people like that through the door. And so I think overall, everybody wins if we add that into our future ordinance.
Nudged. Thank you.
Supervisor Sabatier's comment. Because I don't know what the current background check entails. I know it includes the fingerprinting. But does it also include sending the name and identifying info to the local law enforcement, the sheriff in this case, to run a local records check?
The live scan form is submitted to the Lake County Sheriff's Office, which then forwards it to the DOJ and Homeland Security for their background checks. They get back the report from both of those jurisdictions or agencies and review what comes back to see if any of them are disqualifying offenses. If so, they send a note to Community Development saying this person has, is disqualified. Otherwise, we get a, this person is qualified to be part of this application.
Okay, thank you. I understand that. So that would lead me to believe that we're, what I'm trying to get towards is are they running them for a local warrant that wouldn't be on the fingerprint report? Because you could have a warrant, and it wouldn't show up necessarily on your fingerprint check.
I would defer that to the Sheriff's Department.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, try to find out more about that based on that question.
If I may respond, it's only the results of the fingerprints that is submitted back to CDD.
Then you could have a warrant, and we wouldn't know about it.
Correct.
Thank you.
I think that's everyone's comments. I think I'll make one last one. I know in hearing all of the recommendations, I think that, you know, I know we're supposed to stick to the recommendations, but I know you mentioned also the quorum issues and things like that. I think it's imperative that when we have that discussion on, I think you mentioned adding a position or taking away a position, or whatever the case may be, it might be beneficial to, you know, discuss the structure of it or look at a different option. I know you mentioned that there were quite a bit of projects that are still at bay. We're also looking at 2050. And I know we want to work on an ordinance and whatnot. But at the same time, if we can come together and have a group that truly hashes this out and everybody feels heard. I know that one of the processes we use in the Blue Ribbon Committee, I know at one time or another, there was like a voting system. But at the beginning of it, they were looking at, if there was no consensus, they're not moving forward until that happens. And if someone didn't have a consensus, basically, they would hash that out until they got there. It's based on projects. It's a whole different process. It's a whole different deal. I know the bylaws state, the Rosenbergs is what they adopted for the bylaws. Is that what?
We do not have the bylaws for the task force.
Okay, so there's no bylaws. I know in others, there's Rosenbergs for bylaws, but that's what they accept. But I just, there's that too, that concept. I know that there's backs and forths about other processes and whatnot. So I think for me, I just wanted to make that statement.
If I could get clarification on that. We do have ongoing discussion amongst task force members. You all have seen how I run a meeting, so.
There's videos online for all of them.
They're all online. You can watch them. If you have any concerns, of course, at any time, I serve at the pleasure of the board. Just let me know. But I think that the difference between what I hear you saying and what, how we operate in the task force is that we seek consensus amongst the task force members. There are opportunities for public input, because that's really important. But then the decision-making is held by those that you have appointed. We do not seek full consensus of everyone who's attending that meeting that day and the task force members. If you would like me to change that procedure in the future.
It's not the procedure. You know, it's also for me, it's the structure of who's appointed. I know we appointed. I know that I had a difference in opinion during that appointment and whatnot. So I think at one, on one hand, for example, like I mentioned other boards, they'll have a group of folks that are obviously going to push for what their benefit is, and the others are not going to. They're going to have an opposition. And I think that complicates the situation, especially if there is more folks there that are attending with that, with cannabis as being not only their business, but also unequivocally, they're going to, they're not necessarily going to take the other. I've noticed in watching, the other concerns in consideration without having, you know, a negative thought on it in both aspects. So I'm not just, you know.
In the majority, by far the majority of the meetings that we have had, I have seen those members that you appointed think about the other side. They have been measured. They have been thoughtful. They have been deliberate. They have made tough choices and had really authentic, challenging discussions with respect and understanding. And there's been, anytime you go to a meeting with the same people for two years, you're going to get to know them. And that familiarity has served them very well. I have great confidence in this task force and the members that you have brought together and very, very appreciative of their ongoing efforts, their attempts and their determination to set their own personal interests aside and look at the overall policy for the county. I also want to express my appreciation for the public input as well, because it is very, very hard, when you haven't been appointed, to dedicate that much time to making sure that you are heard. And so I do appreciate, though I understand the frustration, I really do appreciate the effort that the public has made to consistently attend. Particularly Holly Harris. She's really good at details, and she keeps me on track. So it's just been, it's been a long experience. Some days more pleasant than others. But it's been some really good work that these people have done, both public and task force members.
Just real, sorry. Just real quick, I wanted to state, I appreciate this being brought to us and the extensive discussion today, particularly all the comments and feedback from the public on both sides of the issue. So I appreciate having that all out there, and there's still more work to do. So, thank you.
Are there any rules or Brown Act such as, or that you guys, that do govern these meetings that you have? Or are they just real relaxed with no really real governance to the rules?
We have a set agenda that is posted no less than 72 hours prior to the meeting. When we do receive public input in time, we also upload all of that as attachments. We go through the agenda. We allow for discussion or any questions from the task force. We then open it up for public input. We accept the public input. We close the public input, bring it back to the task force for their deliberation and/or action.
No, I've actually watched some of them. So I know how you did it. I just didn't know if there were, if, because it's a committee appointed by the Board of Supervisors, if there was a governance, that, a protocol that you were required to adhere to. That's all I'm asking.
Oh, sure. We have not accepted any as formal bylaws, but it sounds like Lloyd says that all of us, all the boards kind of have similar structures. And so I follow, in an effort to make sure that public input is encouraged and accepted, I follow that standard procedure that I've learned from the Planning Commission and the board.
Sure. So something along the lines of the Brown Act or the Robert rules of our, or the Robertson's, so.
And the purpose of all of those is to make sure that everybody gets to have their say.
Absolutely. So it's all upfront. Okay, next, I had a couple of little comments. Personally, just looking at it from a, kind of a ranching type of a style, I would prefer where you didn't put down the concrete, as some of you are mentioning, and planting directly in the ground in a hoop house, however ventilated. Is this okay to, go on, is this okay to speak to or no? Yeah, okay. Because then we're not disturbing the natural lands as much. That's my own, you know, my own two cents worth. I would also, I've talked to some people that actually do grow and asked them what would help them. And one in particular mentioned where they are allowed, where the growers are allowed, if they were allowed to grow more densely in those particular areas, and then have fewer areas that are disturbed with it. Does that make sense? So that they can produce more. Yes, they could produce more in those areas. Personally, I'm not a fan of it. Not that I have not seen benefits from it, so I'm kind of late to the game with that. We actually personally had bought 33 acres next door to stop a grow from going in next to us, because we did not want the odor. So I can actually sympathize with those that are kind of, you know, really trying to curtail it. And because it costs us a lot of money to stop a grow from going in. So that's my own take. But there are solutions, and I would like to see some of, what is being known is that the cap, perhaps if some of them had a little more input, they could suggest some things, as Peter has mentioned, to give her better balance in it. Because one of the things I've noticed with a lot of committees is they try to get one-sided, so they can get their things through the door. And when that happens, you don't, you don't make a bigger percentage of the people happy. So I think it's important to look at both sides. Thank you.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Thank you for the discussion. I hope next time, when we do bring back anything related to the farm protection zone, that we can get a map of the, I'm looking at it right now, the California Farmland Conservancy, so that we can identify to maybe better understand why it was designated as such in the original place, when we created the farmland protection zone. Just because you see what you believe is farmland of importance.
Current map versus the recommended changes?
No, the map of the state of California, in my opinion, when you look at Lake County, it helps to understand why we identified those specific areas as farm protection zone. Just because it looks like farmland doesn't mean it's identified as important, local or state-important, prime farmland, or I forget what the number four is, but.
I'd be happy to get more details on that, so I could furnish that.
But I think it helps to better understand why we got to where we were in the first place. I am concerned, Director Turner, about the timeline that we've seen thus far in this task force. It's been a very long time coming. It's been very time-consuming. What is your anticipation of timelines to conclusion? And when should we maybe ask for another report? Because I would like to get to a conclusion rather than seeing it go on longer than necessary. And I, in my opinion, I think it's already gone longer than I would have assumed would be necessary. It feels like we're taking longer to update the ordinance than we did to create the original ordinance in the first place. That's just me. But I'd like to get an idea of what your timeline is, because I'd love for you to come back at a certain amount of time and let us know where you are and what's going on, so that we can help with the great amount of stuff that you are working on, if we can be helpful in helping to streamline some of those things for you.
I appreciate that. This was not meant to be a permanent standing committee. We have made a few different pivots in the process to sort of make time more efficient. And I am encouraged, I'm thankful that the board did take us down to a seven-member board, because quorum has been a problem. So I am anticipating, I would like to think, gosh, let's say we get quorum from here on out. I think we can probably be finished with our recommendations within, now that we're meeting every week, maybe four to six weeks. At that point, then it becomes, it becomes, okay. That's 12. Well, I'm not done. Wait just a moment. So that would finish the recommendations. At that time, when we start the internal draft. And I'm going to take the recommendations from the task force, as well as the input that you've given me in both of these updates, to start drafting the actual ordinance. That is a, I would be happy to come back with a final update, an overall list of recommendations from the task force as soon as we are completed, if that would be helpful.
Now, I understand, I saw Rebecca at Mr. Phillips's funeral the other day, or service. And she's going to be out of town for quite a while. Do we have somebody else representing the agriculture to step in in her place, by chance?
We have not had anyone in anybody else's place, except for the fire chief's position.
Well, yeah, but she's going to be out of town for a couple of months, isn't she? She's finishing her BA or something overseas. So I think it would be pertinent and really important to have somebody, have our agriculture represented there. Or if we could find somebody to stand in for her, maybe she could recommend somebody. But I would, wouldn't want to do that much important work without that being represented.
Will Weiss is on it.
Will Weiss is there. And.
Also with the Farm Bureau.
If the board would like us to solicit applications for alternate positions and bring them forward to you, I'd be happy to do that while we continue our meetings.
I think anything we can do to help you get that quorum, because it sounds like that might not be the case. I appreciate the question.
All right. With that, I think we will conclude here. I think we've covered the agenda item, and it is informational item. Yes, I did, I did. And so with that, we'll go ahead and close this item. We will now, we're, thank you for the presentation and the long discussion. Thank you, everyone, for being involved. I know it went kind of long, but I'm glad everyone got a chance to speak. And we're going to take a quick break. I know we're behind on the 6.9. We're going to get right to it next. I think it helps.
I just, I got distracted and started smiling.
All right. We're going to come back from, uh, the break and move on to our next item on the agenda. Six point nine, which was our three PM, but it looks like we are an hour behind. So we're going to go ahead and still push on. It's a public hearing. Uh, appeal of vicious animal abatement case number seven two nine six located at Elk Mountain Road, Upper Lake, California, nine five four eight five. And we have our animal control department here, uh, our director, Greg Wilkins, and officers Francisco Palayo and Joel, Joel Saldana. Sorry, I almost said Hoel, it's the Spanish way, but. Okay, it'll be, okay, come on up. We'll have to swear, yeah, we'll have to swear everybody in.
So if you're here to give testimony, um, I'm going to swear you in. So please stand and raise your right hand. And if you're on Zoom, raise your hand. All right.
Yes, if you desire to come up and speak or give testimony on this.
Yeah, if you're going to speak at all.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Even if you're not, if you might not speak, just please do it now. So I don't have to do it again. Okay. All right. Yeah. Okay. Do you solemnly?
Officers, if you, yes, sir.
Yeah, just in case. Okay. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Director Wilkins, floor's yours. Yes. Oh, yes, we do have a statement by, uh, our vice chair.
I just wanted. Sorry. I need to make a disclosure for Ms. Palmer's knowledge and everybody else. Just that I, I know Ms. Palmer. I've had a lot of interaction with her. But, um, I don't have, have a conflict. Um, I'd be fairly reviewing this on the evidence and, and not have, um, any predisposed, um, issue against her or anything like that. So I just wanted to disclose that.
Thank you for that, Vice Chair. All right, Jessica, it's all you. I, I think you do, yeah, you need to pull it forward, make sure you.
There you go.
Okay, perfect.
All right.
Okay, so let me start off by thanking you for getting us seen and heard in a timely fashion. It's very important in regards to the animals to move forward as fast as we can for them. So thank you for that. Um, so the original call came in, um, from the Delbars that they on, I believe, twelve ten, twenty twenty-four, that four canines had come on their property. They'd been, they had pictures of the canines on the property, and they had a bunch of cattle that had been, um, either severely injured and/or killed. Um, I do have a list of several timelines and communications with us and with, um, seeing the dogs and things like that. So the, the twenty-eighth is the first time they, I guess, had an interaction with us. Um, and then on December, I believe, twenty-fourth, they had come to the shelter. We were closed. They had asked for Director Wilkins, um, so he did call them back. Um, they did end up taking the dogs to Mendocino County, which we did get the dogs from Mendocino County, and we've had them in our care since then. Um, so I will hand it off to Greg so he can explain the conversations that he had with them. And then we'll come back to me for when I receive pictures and evidence of what had happened with the dogs and the cattle.
So I was first made aware of it, I think the twenty-third, actually. One of the staff members sent me a text message saying that Mr. Delbar was at the shelter, wanted to speak with someone. Um, and my correspondence with, correspondence with her, I said, hey, just get the information. I get back with him as soon as possible. Uh, it was around the holiday time, so I, so it was not the same day when I was able to get in contact with them. Um, I think maybe the day after Christmas, I received a, a message asking to contact the sheriff office. And it was in relate, relating to Ms. Delbar contacting them about the same issue. Hey, we have these, we have animals on our property killing our cattle. Contacted her the same day. Um, we talked about trying to get someone out. It was a holiday, so it's like, I can try to get in contact with one of our officers to come in on her day off to kind of help. Um, through that process, we ended up, they ended, well, the Delbars ended up taking the animals to Mendocino County. It was about three PM that day, so about later in that day, they had the animal, they found the animals in custody, were able to kind of load them up, take them to Mendocino. Um, the next day, Mendocino brought the animals back to our facility. And we kind of, we've had them in custody ever since. And through my communication with the Delbars, it kind of laid out that, hey, we would follow the investigation wherever it leads us and make the appropriate steps going forward there. And then once we were off of our quote unquote holiday, got with the deputy director, and we kind of started the investigation, which turned up someone with information here.
Um, so on the seventh, I spoke with the Delbars daughter. She had come in and given me, um, several pictures, which I provided to the board. I do have a few copies here if anybody wants to see them. Um, they're pretty graphic, so before anybody looks at them. Um, yeah, they're pretty gnarly. Um, the Delbars are here, um, to, you know, with a lot of community members to speak against these dogs and the history that they've had with them. Um, with these particular dogs, we have impounded two. They've ended up all the way in Blue Lakes before, so we have impounded two of the dogs previously. Um, nothing vicious at that time. Um, but just to give a little bit of history, um, ranging back to twenty sixteen, we have had encounters with Ms. Palmer in regards to probably almost every animal she has had. There have been horse attacks. There have been goat attacks. Um, there have been, uh, kitten attacks, um, and now the cattle. Not necessarily these particular dogs, but it is a history of, um, improper containment and her animals injuring other animals. So I don't know if you'd like to speak with the Delbars or with Ms. Palmer first, if anybody'd like to speak, um.
Well, I think, uh, go ahead, Vice Chair.
I just have a quick clarification. The evidential photos that you mentioned, is that what we already got in our?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So I think what we'll do is we'll go with, uh, you said Mrs.
Mrs. Palmer is the owner of the, the four canines.
We'll start with Ms. Palmer, and then, uh, we'll go with the Delbars. Ms. Palmer, would you like to come up and state anything?
Okay. Um, I have letters. Do you guys want the letters that I got from people to say, because my dogs, they're not vicious. If anyone can look at the pictures, you can clearly see that four canines could not do that terror inside of a cow out. That's called a, like I would say, a mountain lion or coyotes. And if there's any pictures of my dogs visible killing their cows or cattle, I would like to see those. Because there's no actual pictures of my dogs in the act of killing any cattle or any animal in the past or anything. It's all just here, like, they assume, which is my dogs, yes, they were on their property. They assume that my dogs did it. Two of them are puppies, are only seven months old. And the other ones, she's only, if you look at the pictures, my dog, I could prove to you that my dogs did not kill these cows. I guarantee it. Like, did they think about calling fishing game? No, they called, why wouldn't you call fishing game and have fishing game come out and look, and look at the tracks and try to determine, because they're more knowledgeable about the markings and everything compared to a dog. I mean, my oldest dog's only three years old. And you think it could take down a cow, let alone four cows and eight calves? Kind, kind of seems hard, highly unlikely in my, my vote, my vote, or whatever. I mean, that's all I have to say. I mean.
Thank you. All right, uh, was there anything else? Uh, did you want to add to that or anything before I go on and ask the Delbars come up?
Um, no, I, I believe we can move on to the Delbars because I, I think they have some insight and possibly someone here with them that might have some information in regards to, um, things that she has said.
All right.
My granddaughter. She's here to keep me level. Um, thank you for having this hearing today. I really appreciate that. Uh, this has been a really trying month, December. I'm trying not to get emotional. Sorry. When you see something you raise, uh, treated like these cattle were, and you put them on your ranch, um, you don't expect to see this kind of devastation. And you don't expect to not get any assistance, uh, from the people that you're reaching out to to help you. And I, I have extra copies, and I know, Jessica, if you could hand these out for me. They include some extra pictures of cows that we went through them this weekend with their ears torn off. And, um, also where I found the cow, where we found the dogs, um, uh, which was in a trailer and, and an old grow site. Um, but I'd like to go more over this timeline, because I, I really feel like the, um, it's important for the board to know, uh, that the, the lack of response, um, was something that, uh, I was not expecting, um, from the county. So on November twenty-eighth, we saw issues. Um, we saw a couple, um, of our, or a group of our cattle. Um, we go in through our property, either through Bachelor Valley, or you can go through Elk Mountain Road. And, um, on that day, after Thanksgiving, we were up there for Thanksgiving on the ranch, um, we found two cows dead. Um, I didn't have my camera with me, I, my phone. I didn't expect to find dead cows. We went later and took pictures of them. So you'll see two cows in there, a red one, um, that is all bones now, but she wasn't when I found her. Um, and a black one that was chased into the fence, um, where she died. Um, and that was, we did not have, I did not have my phone. I also found calves that day that I didn't take pictures of. Um, on November twenty-ninth, we found a third cow and calf that we discovered. Uh, the December fourth, I, I made my first call to the Lake County Animal Control. Um, I got the, a voicemail came on. I left a message and waited for a call back. Uh, then on December eleventh, I, since I hadn't gotten a call back, I called. I talked to the staff, um, told them about the dogs, uh, told them, uh, or gave them our addresses, and, uh, was informed that they knew who Courtney, um, was, and that, um, they, you know, they, they knew where, where these dogs were. And at that point, I really thought, if you know where these dogs are, and you know who has them, why don't you go get them? Like, I, I, I thought Lake County would go get the dogs. Um, that didn't happen. And so, um, on the seventeenth, I called again and, um, asked, uh, who was, who, what officer was in charge? And so, on the seventeenth, I called again and asked who was, what officer was in charge. I left another message on a, was transferred to a voicemail on the seventeenth, left another message, asked for them to call me back. I still have not heard back at that point from anybody at Lake County Animal Control. On December seventeenth, my husband got this packet together, went over to, or no, on the twenty third, excuse me, went over to the office and tried to find somebody to talk to. I was unaware, it was that you, that Lake County takes the week off of December. I know there's a holiday there, but I didn't expect the whole week to be shut down. He tried to leave this packet so that the Director could have it. They wouldn't take the packet of the pictures and our information. I know that we tried to reach out to county supervisors because at this point, I mean, we're just seeing, and it's hard, it's hard when you have a ranch to know which way these dogs came in. We have cameras out there, there's pictures of them on cameras. But they didn't come in the same way every time. They'd come in through Bachelor Valley and they got Ralph Gambanini's cows. They came in through other areas and, you know, there's other reportings of them, but they never came in through the exact same location. So, then, on the twenty sixth, we found, we saw the dogs running, a cow. You'll see that cow's face is in there, her whole face is chewed off. They did see the dogs on that, on that day. And then we captured, they told us which way the dogs were going. My brother, who is here today, Jim Eddy, and I were in Lake County and Upper Lake because at that point, I was like, we're not getting any assistance from anyone in Lake County. And we have to, we have to go deal with this. So, we found the dogs and then we finally, and then I called your incoming, I called our sheriff because I said, what do I do? I don't know what to do. I'm not getting any help. And he said, let me call the new sheriff coming into Lake County. And so, he was nice enough to call me back. And he said, Katie, I'll make phone calls. I should be able to get a hold of somebody. So, he made phone calls and he called me back and said, no one's answering their phones. And I said, okay, well, I guess, you know, we'll try to take these dogs. And because I couldn't leave them there and have them go kill more of our cows. I just couldn't do it. And so, my brother and I and my son-in-law and my sons, we were able to get the dogs and we took them home. I did have a conversation that day with your Director and I asked him, what are you going to do with the dogs? And he said, well, we'll probably have to return them. And I said, no, 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 I'm not going to bring them to you if you're going to return them. And I had him on speaker with my brother and I was like, you can't, you know, you can't do that. He did let us know he was new here and he was just hired in October and he was trying to get things straightened out and I appreciate that, but it doesn't help. It's December. And we've lost, I mean, there's more than sixty-four thousand dollars worth of loss. And I'd like to know, you know, is Courtney going to pay for that? Or is the board going to pay for that? I mean, we've been, we've been a month trying to get help out of Lake County and haven't received anything. Finally, he, one suggestion was to leave the dogs in the trailer overnight where we found them and they'd come and get them in the morning because they didn't have staff on. I just wonder if I was bit by the dogs, what, what that would, you know, did you have nobody to come to help if somebody was attacked? So, anyways, we took the dogs home. We called Mendocino County Animal Control and they came and picked the dogs up the next day and then they were returned and we're in this process. I wish I was in this process a month ago. And I wouldn't have lost all of these animals. And those are what I could find. I'm probably down, I put down ten calves, but we're probably down fifteen, twenty calves because I don't know what was calving. We calve right now on what we lost. Our, my boys have seen the dogs, they've shot at the dogs, but they couldn't, you know, once they hear a side-by-side coming up or a truck, they take off. So, we've seen the dogs on the property in person with the livestock. We only have cameras in certain places. So, also, just, yeah.
Since, since the dogs are not there, has there been any type of situation with the calves?
No, no. Just, just other animals coming in, cleaning up their mess. I mean, that's what it does. It causes the bears and everything else to come because they can smell the dead animals. I do have a letter here from John Harper, if you guys, that talks about the differences between what dogs and coyotes do, dog tracks and coyote tracks. I do have pictures, I didn't provide those in here, but I can provide them to you if you want them, of the dog prints around the animals. And I do have Fish and Wildlife Service here today that can talk about the differences between dog, what dogs attack. They go for ears. There's a picture of a cow in there who had, that fell down in a creek and her head is lodged between a rock and a stump, a tree, end of a tree. And her ears are torn off and she, I'm assuming she drowned down there and couldn't get, we couldn't get her head wedged out of it. She was dead down there. So, and, and all of these animals, their ears are torn off and then, just like the ones that are still alive fighting for their calves.
Supervisor Owen, I know you have it.
Did you notice, I'm sorry, I'm really sorry for your loss and I know it's, it's hard. We've had some problems ourselves with coyotes mainly at our place. On your cameras, have you noticed, was it the same dogs going in and out? Yeah, that's what I was suspecting.
Even the neighbor's camera that is to the north of us, I know you don't think four dogs that size can do damage, but when they run an animal long enough, they absolutely can. And the neighbor next door had an elk that was actually down and he, one of those cameras is off of, one of those photos is off of his camera.
And with your lost cows, you've also lost that calf crop, which also adds to that for this year.
Exactly, exactly.
The number of calves that cow would have brought.
Yeah, the state law says times it by two. I've got state law, I've got your laws here. I've been through it all. You know, some counties are different, but the state law says times it by two, but that's a small amount for what we lose.
Because that cow could produce eight, ten calves.
Exactly, exactly.
Right, and I wanted to also state, I wanted to let you know Supervisor Sabatier, I appreciate you forwarding the email because I did get the text, I did get the pictures and whatnot and then I know Supervisor Sabatier forwarded it to Director Wilkins and then it went from there. I called back a little after, back to Mr. Delbar. And so, I just wanted to let you know that and I wanted to thank you for picking that up for me.
It didn't sound like, it didn't sound like it was a good situation of the need to convey the information. Granted, I never know what the full story is, I only know what I hear on the phone, but provided the information as quickly as possible. And to be honest, to have it on our agenda as quickly as possible, I already gave Director Wilkins kudos because usually it takes quite a long time for this type of appeal and I think that this was important enough that it should have been dealt with in a speedy way and happy that it's here in front of us for us to make a decision. If I may, Chair? So, if I heard correctly, it sounded like, and I apologize, I gotta look at the name again, sounded like Ms. Palmer did agree that her dogs do go on your properties based on what she said earlier. And I'm looking at the, and of course, there's some testimony from our animal control team under oath that this is not the first time that we've had to deal with Ms. Palmer. I do see here all of the following conditions that would come along with this. I guess I feel like it needs more finality of if we have to come get these dogs one more time, like those dogs are, we're done with these dogs, they're, do we deem them vicious dogs or do we need more evidence of truly them eating a calf or killing a cow? Like, what's this process? I will say the ears are not a mark of a wild animal. Typically, a wild animal will go for the throat so that you stop trying to tear me apart. I'm going to kill you as soon as possible as the animal, not me. And seeing the ears, that's just what dogs do. They tend to kind of, it's a game almost in a way, even though it hurts and can lead to further things. So, the pictures that I'm seeing provide enough evidence that this is not a wild animal issue, that this is more of a domesticated animal issue. And yes, a pack of dogs can do a lot of harm, which is definitely not something that I want to allow to keep going. But is there any more finality that can be placed into the following conditions than just this? Because I feel like it's, it's asking somebody to do something, but if it happens again, what is the next step? Can that next step be inscribed in this following conditions?
So, yes, ultimately, the answer is yes. In the past, you know, if you do violate it, it can go a range of, you know, here's a citation, don't do that again, to where we're now asking for an order of destruction on the animals because we don't feel safe returning them to someone that cannot keep them contained and they're going to continue to, you know, wreak havoc like they've already done. So, yes, ultimately, we could come back if it's a violation that happens and ask for an order of destruction on the dogs. It's happened in the past.
And then, and I appreciate that, thank you. And I have two more questions. One is, I personally, for my animal, who is an escape artist, when I first got my dog, have been using the invisible fence collar and it works like a charm. I don't see like a backup to the, like if they get out of the enclosure, there's no backup. Is there a way to add the inclusion of a invisible fence collar as well? Just trying to make this as strong as possible.
That I don't know the answer to if I'm able to alter an already standing ordinance.
So, maybe it's something to look at for future changes?
It's something we can certainly change how it's laid out.
Okay, because we have a lot of these escape artist animals throughout our communities and I would really like to see us take a hard stance on how people should contain them because maybe they can't afford to build a full fence. But the fact is, the invisible fence works really, really well in teaching your dog and training your dog where the limits are. Maybe people don't like the shock and maybe I'll get in trouble for saying it, but I think it's very useful to make sure that you get what you want.
My only suggestion would be, that would be more appropriate, I think, for a nuisance abatement versus a vicious abatement. In my opinion, a vicious abatement does need to be cement slab, four walls, a roof, I mean, a fortress that they literally can't escape. Where a nuisance is more of a dog that's just constantly running out, you know, maybe getting into trash, not actually causing any harm to anyone besides the fact that it's running loose, where a vicious animal, I think, needs a little more secure, more than just an invisible line. Of course, it could be a secondary.
Exactly, that's what I was looking for for this one. And then, I guess, my third one, my last comment is based on our ordinance that we have. If somebody has a history, and of course, we'd have to have evidence of that documentation of it and currently here, we're creating evidence as we move forward. Is there a way that we can have historical, holding people accountable based on prior history of other animals where there's this constant need of services to be provided because they're not providing the right security for these animals, the right environment for these animals? Just wondering if we're able to create a case against an owner versus just dealing with an animal, I guess, and looking to see what do we need in the future to help make sure that we can hold accountable pet owners and not just deal with individual animals on a separate case-by-case basis?
Right, honestly, I don't know the answer to that. I can look into that and see what an option is. From my understanding, it's a court order that needs to happen that they cannot have any animals, basically, is what a judge has to come in and deem that they're not responsible enough to have animals. But I can look into that and see if that's something we can either add to this ordinance or not.
And for clarification, you're asking about, not necessarily pet re-offenders, but the pet owner who are the multiple offenders, is there any kind of way to hold them accountable?
Yeah, and it doesn't, I get it that saying you can't have animals is a very difficult task, but maybe we can jump to fines and other issues or taking the animals away a little faster rather than having to have the community deal with those circumstances. But I'm getting a little bit into the weeds and into the very vague area, but I just wanted to bring it up, so thank you.
May I, I have two extra things here. One is food and ag code and it says Article one, three, one, one, zero, five, the Board of Supervisors shall provide for both of the following, the taking up and impounding of all dogs which are found running at large in violation of any provisions of this division, the killing in some humane manner or other disposition of any dog which is impounded. And then, I also have damages for wrongs and I don't know if I can have the Director hand these, I have copies of them for you as well. In my packet of stuff that I have for you, my daughter, who just went out with my granddaughter, she had Facebooked, because I was trying to figure out after the first animals were found, who do these dogs belong to? Because I was not, I had called and I wasn't, I didn't get a response back and so, I thought, we just better do our own detective work. And so, the owner, Courtney, she responded that those were her dogs in that which you have. She makes it very clear that she doesn't want to tie her dogs up or lock them up because she's afraid of bears or coyotes getting them. I wouldn't be afraid of that right now. I think they're probably do just fine. But I don't see any instance where that is going to work. And I just can't imagine those dogs being given back and having to go through this.
Supervisor Owen?
Ms. Delbar, I know you've been involved with the ag department quite a bit and is there not a state law that the dog owner is responsible for the damages done by their animal? So, in my mind, I'm thinking, I'm not questioning you at all as far as it being those dogs. I'm sure, you know, with what you've provided, that you're pretty accurate on that. And I think it's, I think it would be, I don't think it'd be proper for us not to, now, whether we kill the dogs or whether they go back to her and she learns her lessons, when you hit her in the pocketbook like you have been hitting the pocketbook, I think that is the biggest encouragement to change the behavior.
Yeah, and the paperwork I just provided you was the state law on if animals, it's not just them dying, if they're harassing them or any of those things, that is there as well, that it's two times the amount. So, you have a page there that shows sixty-four thousand dollars that she owes us at this time. The cow with the picture with no ears, we got her in this weekend. She has basically pus and stuff inside of her head. She's going to have to be put down, she already lost her calf. And that's going to be, you know, two times right now. You know, I think I'm being very,
Very cordial.
About the prices because cattle prices right now are high. You know, twenty-five hundred dollars, times two, it's five thousand dollars more on top of this, on top of this bill. The cattle that are, other cattle that are missing ears, they don't go to the auction yard and people just want to buy them because they, it damaged, they're damaged. And they look at them as either they've been wild or something else has happened to them. So, they're not something that you turn around and sell easily either. We've got those. And all of these things, I don't think our numbers even come close to meeting what our losses are. And I just want to point out, and I know we have some other people in the room, landowners that have lost animals due to those dogs as well.
No, I think it needs to be addressed.
May I speak to that as well?
Yeah, one second, County Council, and then we'll go with you.
So, what's before your board today certainly is the abatement order that's being appealed by the recipient of this order, the person who's subject to this order, at least before your board's consideration. Your board certainly can take into account any relevant evidence that your board would deem relevant for purposes of whether or not to sustain, overrule or modify the abatement order that Animal Control has presented to your board.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I was basically going to speak on the same thing is that, you know, I don't think that Animal Control or the board has the authority to, you know, make a claim that she's owed that money from Courtney. That is something she would have to civilly go after her to receive those fines. That is something she would have to civilly go after her to receive those funds back. So that's, we're not here for that purpose, unfortunately.
All right, thank you. Thank you for that. And so go ahead.
Just a follow up. No licenses for these dogs?
Two of them were microchipped and licensed, but that's only because we impounded them previously. And in order to release them, the the state says we have to, you know, give them microchips, give them rabies in our county ordinance. So, well, they're not spayed and neutered. The the spay neuter ordinance is basically, if we adopt anything out, it has to be spayed or neutered. We can redeem animals. And if we choose, we can cite somebody out for it. But we cannot force an owner to spay and neuter. Unless there's something like a vicious abatement where it's listed that that's part of the stipulation and in the ordinance.
Which is what's there.
All right, you said there was other people that wanted to?
It's not there.
Come on up.
Hi. My name is Antonio Gonzalez. I have a few goats up in Elk Mountain. More than a few goats. About three, four, five months ago, I had these dogs come up to my property, damaging two, three, four, five goats. Ears, tails, whatever. I found a couple dead goats up in the hills. They got chased. But the dogs have pictures of these dogs. I don't know if they're hers, but I have pictures of the dogs and my property that I've been chasing away for several, several weeks. And then I nighttime, daytime, you know, middle of the night, at any given time, you know, the dogs just come sometimes. And then, you know, all their neighbors have have issues with these dogs too. Chickens, dogs, turkeys. Just been, it's been, it's been a while. I have dogs. I have a lot of goats and I have a lot of dogs. Only a few dogs. When my animals get out, either down in Napa, Mendocino, Chasta, in any county in Northern California, and they take, they get taken by Animal Control, I get paid a fine. I pay a fine. I have a business. I pay about $1,800 to $2,800 for the insurance just in case my animals, they make a damage, they kill a cow, a dog, get into a fight or anything. You know, I try to be responsible. My my dogs get out all the time because deer break the fence, a turkey breaks the fence. I have this portable electric fencing that you can put around. They're quick setup. I believe that something has to be done because, you know, I get punished, not punished, I I I.
Held accountable.
I get, yeah, exactly. You know, when my dogs get out and I pay my fees and I try to be responsible, like I said again. And then I just, you know, it has to be addressed. It has to be, that something has to be done.
Tony, do the dogs look like the dogs in the pictures?
They do. They do, unfortunately, they do.
Which I can speak on that as well. I, it it was posted on social media. I remember seeing Mr. Gonzalez's post. It was never called into our department. But they are the exact, one of them looks exactly like that dog. The the adult Belgian Malinois. Looks exactly like the one that ripped the tails and stuff off of Mr. Gonzalez's goats.
How far are you in proximity to where Mrs. Bel, sorry?
Just over the hill.
Okay.
Yeah, just over the mountain. I live on a couple miles from from where the dogs live. I don't exactly where, but somewhere there.
That's approximate, I mean, that's, you know, that's what I wanna do here, basically. All right, are there any other questions? All right, is there, thank you for your for your testimony. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, yes, come on up.
I wanna know if there's any physical, if anyone actually seen my dogs in the process or like in the action of killing or doing this? Why didn't you just shoot them? Because any rancher has the right to shoot an animal that's attacking their livestock, right? So if you didn't actually see my dogs attacking your livestock, then how can, I mean, you know, it's kinda like damned if you do, damned if you don't. But I mean, I would rather them shot my dogs than having to do all this. Because I mean, they have a right to. But if they didn't actually witness my dogs attacking their livestock? I mean, come on.
We have a witness.
I I believe Ms. Delbar stated that her sons did attempt to shoot the dogs, but they missed.
Sir, if you wanna come back up to the?
The night of, we had this incident in my house, middle of the night. I don't remember the time, 11:00, midnight, 1:00 in the morning. I heard a, I had a bunch of goats in a trailer that I was ready to move to a different place. You know, just like six, seven goats, I don't remember how many. I heard something barking and, you know, like a big racket, you know, and and the trailer, so I went outside in my underwear. And I saw these dogs. I saw dogs. They looked just like those dogs. I'm not gonna say 100% they're those dogs, but they looked just like those dogs. It's nighttime. I have no flashlight, no lights, anything. I run inside the the house, grab my rifle, and I shoot a a couple rounds towards these dogs. I didn't hit anything because the night, middle of the night, 100 yards away. I mean, you had tried to be careful as much as, you know, careful as as possible. But I, for the several weeks, I was at my place with a rifle by the door, waiting for these dogs. The dogs came to my property again, but they were down towards the bottom of the hill. Traffic up and down. You cannot shoot the dogs, you know, towards, you know, traffic or other houses. So you have to be careful. And yeah, I just, I did took a couple shots at the dogs, unfortunately. And I don't like to kill dogs. I don't like to kill any animals.
Thank you. All right, I think I'm not seeing anyone else come up. And so actually, there's another gentleman. Come on up, sir.
How you doing? I'm Gary Johnson. I'm from Mendocino County and I'm a retired Wildlife Services Specialist. Worked there for 34 years. And Fish and Game, Fish and Wildlife, they're the ones that would call us, our agency USDA, to come in and identify the animals responsible for the damage, whether it was the, you know, hogs rooting, whether it was coyotes, bears, lions. I've seen anything from gray foxes to black bears killing livestock. And after reviewing these pictures, I lean definitely towards those are dog damage. You know, as what you guys stated, the ears being chewed, noses being chewed. Generally, when, I don't think I've ever seen a cow been killed by a mountain lion or a black bear. Few calves killed by coyotes, but they don't chew their ears off like that. So anyway, we're the agency that they would call in because sometimes Fish and Game Wildlife would issue depredation permits for bears and mountain lions when actually it was domestic dogs that was doing the damage. And that wasn't fair to the lions or the bears. If we were trying to target something, we wasn't supposed to be targeting. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm not seeing anyone else, so I'll come back to the board. And let's see where we're going from here.
I do have a question. Based on all of the evidence that you have in front of you, the evidence that you've brought us, what kind of fines will occur? Number one, it's cost you money to hold them in your facility. I wanna make sure that we get repaid for that. I don't know if Mendocino is planning to send you a bill for our dogs or not, but I wanna make sure we get hold for that. But there are some violations of the county code that has occurred, whether it's as simple as it's unlawful to trespassing on any farm where on livestock are fouled or kept, things like that. Are there fines being prepared for the owner as well as the fees for holding their animals in their, in our facility because of the situation that we're in?
As as of right now, there's no plan to like cite her out for, you know, the dogs being at large, that sort of thing. But there are extensive fees involved in order for her to, you know, get the dogs back should the abatement order go through. She's also gonna have to comply with the stipulations inside the abatement order. But as of right now, and this is before paying for any spay neuter costs on any of the dogs, cuz none of them are fixed right now. It's at $1,934. That's just for board rabies license, microchips, all the stuff that she has to comply with in order to get them to the abatement, you know, to the property. And I don't know what the vet's gonna charge us as of yet. Could be anywhere from $250 to $350 per dog to spay and neuter. Females are probably gonna be a little bit more more pricey. And it'll depend on what the local vets are gonna try and charge us for that.
And and I guess my question in return would be, why not on the fines if this is an individual who two of those dogs has already had to go to your being pounded? So it's like a repeat offense?
Right, and that's.
At what point?
And that's why we're going to the vicious abatement order, is just going straight to that. She, you know, received fines to get the two dogs out previously. And then now we're at the issue where they're out again and now they've caused damage to other animals, so we just move forward. In the past, we haven't done, you know, stacking things, basically stacking a vicious abatement along with the other citations.
And would that be within our purview County Council to say that? Cuz I I I feel we're being somewhat kind. I don't believe we have enough evidence to say the animals need to be put down today. Like, I don't know that we have the evidence for that. I'm very concerned. I definitely want it so that if we have to go back and deal with it, we're done. But I also feel like a a bit of a sting of like, look, we we keep meeting at the same place for the same reasons. There are rules and regulations to follow. And just paying for the hotel for their animals is not, to me, enough of a sting that I'm I'm would like to do. Can we add that to what we have in front of us today?
So Section 4-10.1 of the Lake County Code addresses the fines. And it applies only for any violation of any provision of the of this chapter itself, which is Chapter 4. Punish obubai and infraction by a certain amount or as a misdemeanor by a fine goes on to cite the the amount, the other fine amounts. So it prerequisites a violation of the chapter. Now, what's before your board today is in, at the onset is an abatement order that's been appealed. The abatement order contains conditions. And at this point, because it's under your board's review, these are proposed conditions for your board's consideration. In order to impose a fine, there would have to be a specific citation of a violation in this code that possibly, in one possible scenario, from a prior violation that's independent of this abatement order that's being proposed to you today. Because as it stands, this abatement order is being appealed before your board. Your board can certainly impose conditions to modify this abatement order. And staff already spoke to charges that may that may need to be imposed. That's also located in an independent, independently in Section 4-4 as far as what staff can charge individuals for the retrieval of the animals. But your board certainly has, also has discretion to to impose any additional conditions to this proposed abatement order. It's just that when it comes to fines, and these were not, which which are not currently cited here, the fines would have to be justified by a cited violation. Maybe a prior one of the of the Lake County, of Lake County Code's Chapter 4.
And I would say that two out of the four aren't licensed. If they were fined last time, that you have the ability to do fines on the other two at the very, very least. I I'd like to give this a timeline. I don't know that I see a timeline. It says microchip within. But like all of 1 through 8, is there a specific timeline that all of this needs to be accomplished by? Cuz I don't wanna hold on to those animals for the next 180 days only to release them and potentially be right back where we started. Like, is there a specific timeline?
There is. It's listed in the in the abatement order that she has signed. I I believe the date, I have to look at it, is the 19th. But I know that it can be tough to get that accomplished, to comply with the abatement order. So I, we can go a little bit further than that. Unfortunately, I don't know how much further we can go because we are full and they are holding space at the shelter. And I'll have to make horrible decisions on other animals that are not there for the same reason that they are, meaning that, you know, their life may have to end because I have to hang on to these dogs to comply with their abatement.
Supervisor Paeska?
So is there a willingness to even comply, to pay these? Okay, and to construct the, okay. What is your time?
Can you come to the microphone, please?
I do have another question for her in regards to the property as well.
What is your timeline to construct the kennel and?
I could have the kennel up within a couple days. I have the, I already have the fencing and everything. I just have to put it up. Me, myself, and I, I'm doing it all by myself.
And the concrete?
That would be a couple more days. I mean, I have to get that. I can do that. I have to go to my brother's memorial in Lowdy on the 19th. So that's Sunday. But I can have it all, I can have it done after that. It'll all be done. But I know that I have to, gonna be out of town on that day.
And Jessica, you had a question as well?
Yeah, the the address that she has provided.
I'll get you the right, I'll get you the correct address.
Okay, perfect, cuz the the address that we were provided does not exist.
Yeah, I'll get you the correct address.
So if we start looking at timelines and there's a failure to comply, what next?
I would.
If she does not comply in the time given and we, you know, continue to work with her, potentially, you know, abatement orders follow dogs and finding someone that's willing to go that route for those dogs is probably gonna be impossible, which will lead to euthanasia of the animals.
And I just wanted to follow up on, just because we do have a history with these dogs, I would, unless told, unless convinced differently, I would be willing to put a hard deadline on, like, obviously, it says the 21st, I think. But giving grace and understanding that their life happens, like, we would have to come to an agreement. I would like to come to an agreement today with that date, what that timeline will look like and not go for past that date, no matter what life situations may happen.
And that includes?
Vice Chair was gonna speak.
Sorry, sorry.
So as of, as of right now, it looks like the timeline is January 21st at 5:00 PM. But in Supervisor Sabate brought it up, I would be in favor of the condition of all fees paid in the, to add to the, modify the abatement order. Just fees for your cost. So I would just propose that.
And then you were gonna?
That's exactly what I was going to say. It was perfect.
So for clarification, you're saying not only the conditions being met with her personal property, but also she would be in need of paying those fees at that time, whatever that drop date would be? Everything, everything needs completed?
Correct.
I agree, okay.
County Council?
Yes, your board has the discretion. There is an independent provision, Section 4-4, that addresses fees. But your board may make that as a, as an additional condition to this abatement order with a hard deadline. Because Section 4-4 does not impose, obviously, specific deadlines.
And because I feel the concern is very real and I'm sure that from the one side of this, it feels like fear that those animals will be coming back when you've seen what they've done to your cattle and your animals. Please reach out as soon as you see something cuz I don't wanna give this a second chance. But without a video or a camera or a picture of them actually in the action of, it's very difficult to say, very vicious dog, this, they are the ones.
Sir, that's not the state law. That is not the law. And you're not following it. And you know, you're not the one that's taking, that, you know, your kids are sitting up there trying to find the goddamn dogs, excuse me. It's not, they're not easy to find. They come through that property in any area that they want to. And so you can sit there and and just as Tony was saying, they're down on one end of the property and you're on the other. And then you hear your cows screaming and you're trying to get down there. And by then, they're gone. And this isn't just affecting my ranch. You know, we pay property taxes in this county. We have for years. This is the first time I've ever come here and asked. We lost, you know, all of our property burned in 2018. Our cows burned in 2018. We never came and asked anything of the board. Elk Mountain Road's a mess. We've never come and asked you to fix the roads. I am asking you now to put these dogs down. Because, does she own that property that she's on where I found those dogs? Is that where she's building? Is that where she's building these kennels at? That's reservation land, does she have, like, is that, does she lease that property? From the, so is the reservation then, is Robinson Rancheria responsible? I mean, who, because she's not, because she's not, there's nothing there, I went, I, I, that's where we've went and went, the dogs went to. Yes, I did, ma'am, and, and-
So, let's, so let's stop having the back and forth here, and I hear you, we hear what you're saying.
I don't think, you know, you, like, sixty-five thousand dollars, like, that, we don't have that kinda money, and you're gonna want us to pay our taxes next year? I think we've been good citizens of Lake County. And I just can't sit here and think that you would give her back her dogs, when she can't take care of them. And we're trying to take care of our livestock. It's just unfathomable. And, and I, you know, the place is a mess where she has them, where's she gonna build a kennel there? You can hardly get up the road, you can't, there's no way she's going to get a truck up that road to deliver concrete.
All right, ma'am, I think-
I, I'm sorry, I-
No, we under, I hear you.
I, I wish you did, because you wouldn't be giving her dogs back.
That's the other thing I heard stated as well by our director, and was that the hard deadline, if it's not met, like you said, how is she going to build whatever the case may be? If that's what you feel, and it doesn't happen, then there is a euthanasian, that euthanasia that will take place. So, it's not as if she's getting the dogs back, like, like, it sounds like you're saying. She has to comply with those, with those-
A week from today.
Yeah, with a week from today, so, I mean, that's, that's what's been stated as well by the, the department. Vice Chair.
And I understand, and these are all valid concerns, but what's in front of the Board of Supervisors is a decision. The Animal Control Director made an order, an abatement order, under his authority as the county's Animal Control Director. That's been appealed, that is all that's in front of us right now. That, that's, that's the, the decision that we have to make, do we grant the appeal or deny the appeal? The, the damage has to go through a civil, that's a separate court.
I, I understand that, sir, I just, it took me a month to get anybody to call me. And it took me a month, and I had to get ahold of your sheriff to get a call back from Animal Control. A month, and you expect me to trust Lake County if she gets the dogs back and they get out and they kill again? You expect me to trust them?
One of the things too, just to note, is this has come to us very, very fast. It hasn't, I haven't seen a situation like this come to us at this level, as expedient as it has. So, I just, the department has an eye on it, we're privy to it. And we know that whatever goes forward from here, it, it's not as if it's going to be not tracked. So, I just wanna assure you that, we hear you loud and clear, we can see you're emotional about it, and we understand. So, we're, we're gonna track it, and we're going to make sure that this takes place, and, and go from there.
If you don't allow the abatement order, what happens?
If we don't allow the-
Well, you said there was two things, I'm sorry, on it today.
It's not that we're allowing it, the animal, our Animal Control Director has made the abatement order, under his authority. We're not, that's not our purview, we're handling the appeal of his order.
If you don't accept the appeal, then what happens to the dogs?
If, if we... Then I would defer to the Animal Control Director to answer that.
So- Okay, so, so if they decide to say that, yeah, her appeal is good, that Animal Control did not do the vicious abatement, didn't have the authority to do it, she has the right to come and get her dogs back and take them home. If they decide to uphold our abatement, that means she now has to follow certain stipulations, which I can give you a copy of what she'll have to do in order to get them back. So, that, that's the two options, they're either deciding right now if they think we did our diligence in saying that, yes, vicious abatement should happen on these dogs, or siding with her that, no, it should not have taken place the way it did.
And under a vicious, vicious abatement does not include putting the dogs down?
You know, it, it can certainly lead to that, it depends on the severity of it. I, in my personal opinion, I do not believe that an animal killing another animal justifies us euthanizing it. Had this been an animal attack on a human, this could have gone a different path, and I would have gone straight to order of destruction on the animals. I do not believe that it is, this case is worthy right now of euthanasia on the animals, without giving her the option to comply with an abatement.
That's too bad.
So, um... Well, we, basically, we've closed public input, if you wanna go briefly, yes, please, please. And from here forward, I have to close this, so we can move forward. Go ahead, sir.
So, the ranch manager to the ranch-
State your name for the record.
Matthew Delbar.
Okay, thanks.
The ranch manager to the ranch north of us that has seen the, that has seen the dogs take down an elk. Oh, the re, he has actually seen them come up to him and tried to attack him himself.
Ma'am?
He wishes to remain anonymous to this day, which is why he is not in here for this, for this hearing. But he has seen them come up to his dogs, to his four-wheeler, and try to take him out.
And sir, I'm glad you're telling us this, but we really need him to at least report to Animal Control. And I'm sure, is there a way for someone to report anonymously, or, or something of the like?
Yes.
Okay, and so, and so that, that's where this helps with the case that's being brought forward from-
I think it was in our reports, but I'll make sure that he gets it back, so that you guys can have it. Because this, we thought it would be taken care of with our own reports, with our own sixty-five thousand dollar loss, but it is not. So, this is why I'm bringing it up now.
Okay, thank you.
It is hard to see that we cannot have these dogs put down, because we have lost so much. I have walked through our cows and walked, felt like I was driving through a refugee camp. This is nonsense, what is happening today. Hey, what is happening, even with the abatement order, or, having these dogs being put down seems to be the only way. We have not lost any dogs since those dogs have been enkennelled, and captured.
Sir, thank you for your input, we heard you loud and clear. Supervisor Sabate?
I, I guess that's just one final question, I apologize, and I guess this is to the Animal Control Team. In your opinion, is it a hundred percent? I'll have to go back to her name, I apologize, Ms. Palmer's dogs who have committed the gruesome pictures that we have seen on the cattle and cows?
That's a tough question. Do I believe that they have shown me sufficient evidence that state, you know, that shows that these are the dogs? Sure, I do believe that these dogs have done something to their animals-
Those specific dogs?
Yes, I even showed the pictures to Ms. Palmer, and she said, yep, those are my dogs. Cuz she was like, I just wanna see the picture, the pictures they have. And she saw the pictures and say, and straight up said to me, yes, those are my dogs.
Again, though, it's not about, are those dogs in the picture hers? Do we have a one hundred percent opinion that the killing that has occurred are because of those dogs? Cuz that, that's where I'm stuck. If it's a hundred percent, then I'll say, let's move forward and euthanize. If it's not a hundred percent, then we start with very harsh, harsh things to make sure that this doesn't ever occur again. If there's ever another issue, unfortunately, then at that point, we're, we're done, because we know that we've already put them in check. But if you could say a hundred percent, then I, I'm willing to move forward, but it's, that's where I'm stuck.
And not say one hundred percent, obviously, I, with great confidence can say they were active participants in some way, shape, form, and fashion, but we do not have the gentleman who spoke and said they saw them verbi- we, we don't have anybody who said they saw them, so it's hard to say one hundred percent. I can say with great, great confidence, because of the owner saying herself before, they were active participants in some form of this. They, they get out all the time, they're captured on camera, but a hundred percent, I cannot say that and be-
So, as you said that, there was a, I know I closed public input, but there was a gentleman that stated he's seen it. You, sir, did you see it, if you would come up and please?
Sorry, I thought we were at this point, so I didn't stand up earlier. Taylor Delbar, I saw him take down a calf. My wife and I were there. I missed, I, unfortunately, with my, with the rifle, and it ran away. And by the time I tried to chase after it, they were gone. The calf was probably two months old, a month old, barely can walk, torn to shreds. I don't know where its mom was, it was by itself. And I went back and took a photo of the calf. But unfortunately, I, not a good shot, so... And it was the main ones that, yeah, it's just-
All four dogs?
All four.
Yeah.
All four.
But I shot out that little black one, black and brown one, and missed that one.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, with that, we'll close public input. Supervisor Owen?
You know, this is something, because I was raised in the ranching industry, and my heart really does go out to you, because I do sympathize absolutely. And I'm so sorry that more can't be done that wasn't brought to us, that we could. I don't question the fact that it is these dogs. And, like I said, we've lost stock in the past, and it, I'm sorry that you missed, to be honest. So, no, I think we need to do what we can do, what was, what was handed to us to do as much as we can. However, I, I wish it could be more. And is there, financially, are you going, I'm gonna ask, that, whether or not you are able to push forward with recapping some of your- Good, okay.
All right, thank you. So, anybody else before we move forward? And I, from what I understand now, Supervisor Sabate, you mentioned that if you knew it was a hundred percent, which was stated by the Animal Control Director, that they didn't know for sure. There was a gentleman that said he did see for sure, he was under oath. And so, I don't know if we wanna move to that extent, or if we're still looking at the abatement recommendations as of now, so...
I, I'm gonna be honest with you, what's not helping me is, is the attitude of the appellant. It, it's, it's... I just, I'm not, I'm not feeling any kind of... And the word remorse is not the what I'm looking for, cuz if, if she believes wholeheartedly that her animals didn't do this, but no sorrow for neighborly situations, and, and that, that's not helping me at all. It just, it feels, I don't know. I, I, I see this from time to time in some of these cases that we bring to us, and, and it feels like we're more annoying people than we are trying to sit, sit there and try to help out with a community issue. And, and... I know I shouldn't let that guide me, but...
All right, so a question on that.
Vice Chair.
If we were to deviate from what's in front of us, how does that look? With the discussion now of potentially going towards a destruction order?
So, the humanely destroyed one, it really hinges on the procedures that is in place here on your board, before your board, under chap, under chapter four. Under the immediate impoundment of a vicious animal, there is a reference there of the animal being humanely destroyed, but only after certain procedures are met, as far as the hearing, and, and at least in part, a determination or recommendation by, by the staff at Animal Control, which you've heard the testimony from staff, saying at this point, that is not part of their recommendation, it sounds like. So, that's, and that is under the immediate impoundment of a vicious animal, per, set of procedures, that's under fourteen point six. What's before your board, under this process, is actually under fourteen, if I'm not mistaken, under fourteen point four, which includes the hearing provisions on that, in which, again, what's before your board is an abatement order that's been stayed because of this appeal. The abatement order contains conditions that, that's before your board's consideration and review. If your board approves the conditions on this abatement order and upholds this abatement order, then the abatement order will then take into effect. And any violation of that will then lead to another set of procedures by which any violation of the abatement order may subject the animal to euthanasia, to being humanely destroyed. Those are the set of procedures that, that are in place in our ordinance. Your board, as I said, as, as stated, has the option of either sustaining the abatement order, overruling it, or modifying it. There's been some discussion of imposing hard deadlines, that is an option for your board. That is part of modifying the abatement order that's being presented for your board's consideration. And any, any of those options can be approved by motion, by your board.
Go ahead Supervisor Owen, did you have your panel?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Anything to add?
I think from our standpoint, obviously, all, the main thing that we wanted to do is do the due process. I mean, we, and, and I feel like we've done it, and then twenty-first, if you guys can correct me, the twenty-first is the deadline. We don't, we don't have to necessarily be generous in extending that. If there's, we don't have to go till the twenty-fifth, like, we can just stay with the twenty-first as the hard deadline and the hard cap, and, you know, go forward with that, I don't, I'm okay with that, I don't have to do an extension on top of what we already have. If we, if we're concerned about, you know, being fair to all parties and holding everyone accountable, I think there was some talk about, because we understand with veterinarian schedules and things, they may need to be extended. We don't have to take that into consideration, we already started, started with the twenty-first being the hard deadline. I'm okay with not extending it out past that, and staying with the original order, and having a hard cap there.
Okay, I'm gonna make, is it okay for me to make a motion?
Yes.
I'm gonna make a motion that we follow the suggestion of the Animal Control.
The hard deadline and all the fines.
Hard deadline.
And, and what about the costs that are pending?
The cost, absolutely.
Which includes the fees.
The nineteen-hundred and something dollars.
This is my first motion, so-
Right, which is probably gonna be more than that, cuz that's just the beginning, and that's not included, cuz they have to be spayed and neutered before they leave, so there's gonna be-
The full amount.
I think we can state the full amount of costs to our county.
So, we'll let, Lloyd?
So, your board may consider a motion to to modify essentially the current draft of the abatement order to include the hard deadline of January, I believe, twenty-first, to satisfy all of the conditions as stated, and also to add the condition that, by that date, that the owner, upon retrieval, prior to retrieving the animals, pay all fees that is, that is outlined in accordance with section four dash four of the Lake County Code.
Okay, I make that motion.
Second.
So, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do I have to read a disclosure or anything on that, or is that? I don't know why, I just thought, because it's a hearing, there might be another disclosure statement that needs to be made or anything, or?
In terms of what's on the abatement order?
Yeah.
That's already been, I believe, provided to the owner, and then there would be a subsequent notice once staff receives the correct address of the owner itself. The owner would receive the modified, essentially the modified version of this abatement order for compliance.
Correct, as soon as I have that address, I'll update the whole vicious abatement order, and with the correct address, and, and she'll get a copy of that.
Just a brief request, if there's consensus at the board, if you could just keep us updated. I know that as things move on, you don't necessarily have to bring this back to the board, nor do I think we need to further deliberate on it, but just to keep us updated as to what's going on with this.
Agree, yes.
Right, and I can also, you know, at least keep the community members up to date as to where we're at in the process as well, please.
Yes, please, thank you.
All right, we'll close this item, and do you have any recommendations there?
I do, sir.
Yes, let's go.
If we could take up five point one eight, seven point six, and seven point seven.
So, we'll go ahead and open up five point one eight, approve amendment one to the agreement between the County of Lake and SCS Engineers for Construction Quality Assurance Services for the East Lake Landfill Phase One Cell Construction Project for a revised total of five hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars, and authorize the chair to sign. We have Public Services Director Lars Ewing here, and if we can, can we, yeah, let's... We're on the next agenda item, so if we can go ahead and-
All right, good evening, Lars Ewing, Public Services Director.
Alright, good evening, Lars Ewing, Public Services Director.
Five point one eight.
Five point one eight.
Did I say the wrong one?
No, he was just asking.
Okay, five point one eight is, as, as was read, uh, is an amendment, uh, to the agreement with SCS Engineers. Uh, the board memo covers, uh, the, the highlights. Um, it is a, um, relatively routine, uh, procedure that we, we commonly do with, uh, with an amendment, um, or to a contract. SCS Engineers is essentially performing construction management services for the East Lake Landfill Expansion Project. Um, that includes onsite, uh, onsite inspection, testing, uh, reporting, uh, and, and so on. And so, the, the project itself, uh, the construction project, uh, extended, uh, had, had some, some change orders to the construction contract that your board approved. Uh, consequently, there, there were necessary changes to SCS Engineers' construction management, uh, agreement. So, um, I will, uh, I will pause there and, um, understand that it was pulled, and I can, uh, address any questions.
Supervisor Sabate, you pulled it, so go ahead.
Yeah, and, and my, my goal is to vote for this and to move it forward. I just, there, there was a piece of me that was very hesitant in seeing that it was a forty-one percent increase in cost. I looked through the purchasing ordinance, and I can't find specifics of when is an amendment really almost a new project? And I don't think this necessarily fits, especially after having conversations with Director Ewing, but it just, it, I've, I've seen things close to this where, and we've had past, uh, um, contracts that have ballooned in size as well. Uh, but I'm very much, as you unfortunately know, a fan of the, uh, open public bidding process to ensure that we're using our public dollars in the right way, and in a very transparent way. Um, but the forty-one percent here, um, made me hesitate, and, and I'm just wondering if, uh, there's a way to look at our purchasing ordinance and maybe adding some criterias? Uh, 'cause, eh, eh, if you have a hundred thousand dollar project already, you have to go, or fifty thousand to a hundred thousand, you have to go out to bidding. There's very specific criteria for that. Here, we're looking at close to a hundred and seventy, a hundred and-
Hundred and sixty-nine thousand?
Like, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars approximately. Uh, and so, it just made me pause, 'cause these are state and federal dollars, uh, and I don't know what the procurement expectations are based on those, and typically, they can be very strong when it's coming from state or, uh, federal dollars. These are not specifically ours, uh, they came from somewhere else, if I'm correct.
No, these are, these are local funds, it's the enterprise fund at the landfill.
Okay, okay, I apologize for that. Um, but I, it just, it was something I was looking for, if there was maybe consensus to, uh, look at adding something to our purchasing ordinance that would help directors and board members to identify when an amendment can be an amendment, and when it really needs to go back to being a new project altogether.
Well, I'm not seeing consensus, so-
And if there's no consensus, or there is consensus, I'm wait, I'm ready to move forward and, and approve. It was just me wanting to share my, uh, concern based on what I had read and seen, uh, in, in this, uh, item.
Alright, I'll go ahead and open it up to the public, to see if there's any comments on this. Alright, I'll bring it back to the board, for, for their deliberation.
I move that we approve amendment one to the agreement between the County of Lake and SCS Engineers for Construction Quality Assurance Services for the East Lake Landfill Phase One Cell Construction Project for a revised total of five hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars, and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? And motion carries. Alright, next, we'll move on to item seven point six. Consideration of Resolution Accepting the Work of the Lassern Harbor Dredging Project Twenty-four dash thirteen and Directing Public Services Director to File the Notice of Completion. Lars?
Alright, good evening. Um, I, I, first off, I appreciate, um, taking these items up, they are, uh, they are time-sensitive. Uh, in this case, it, it, um, the, the notice of completion allows us to, to pay the contractor. So, with the delay, uh, it, it, you know, it, it would have a significant impact on the contractor. So, uh, just to, to go, give some, some quick update, uh, or quick information on the Harbor dredging project, uh, started in early November and completed on December thirteenth. Um, uh, we had Mars Engineering, a general engineering contractor that did the dredging. Um, it, uh, it increased the, the channel depth back down to the original design depth, uh, and the original construction depth of, uh, the seventies, when that harbor was first built, uh, and had not since been dredged. So, uh, so the project took out about three thousand cubic yards of material, uh, that was deposited at the, um, at the East Lake Landfill, not in the, not in the disposal area, but in a separate, uh, separate area. Um, uh, there was a turbidity curtain that was, uh, that was put in place, and if Johanna can show the, uh, show the picture, I'll continue so we don't delay. Um, but the turbidity curtain was put in place by Water Resources at, at their recommendation, and, and you can, what, what you see there, where it's brown, is, is kept in place, um, and, and the, the darker area is the, is the lake. So, the turbidity curtain is, is up at the very top, um, and you can see that, that the turbidity curtain worked. That's the, the simple thing that, that I wanna show here. Uh, hopefully, it, uh, you can tell what we're looking at. The turbidity curtain is the, right there, thank you. So, that's going from the, uh, from the breakwater, out, uh, then to the shore, from the, from right to left. And so, what, what looks green is, is being held in place in the harbor, uh, while the dredging occurred. So, it, it, uh, it improved or helped maintain the water quality in the, in the, the, the main part of the lake. Let's just put it that way, so, um, so kudos to Water Resources for that. Um, also, we had archaeological and tribal, uh, tribal monitors on, onsite, um, and, uh, and, you know, the project was a success, it took a while to, to get there, but, uh, the long and the short of it is it's done, uh, and I recommend, um, the approving the resolution to, for me, to, uh, to file the notice of completion.
Lars, I wanna thank you for, uh, seeing this through. I know we've had to pivot many times on this, and, uh, just the report you just given about how it went for that whole, the November, December timeframe, is just testament to, um, taking a good approach to it. We got there, and we got it done effectively, and just really glad that we're able to move forward on this, so thank you again.
Thank you. Kudos to, uh, Capital Project Manager Joe, uh, Joe Cooper, by the way, for, for managing it. So, he, uh, he, he, his, um, management of that has really helped.
Any other questions? I'll open it up to the public for any comments. Not hearing any, we'll bring it back to the board.
Uh, for the resolution.
Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Owen?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabate?
Aye.
Uh, Supervisor Rasmussen?
Aye.
Supervisor Piska?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes. Resolution has been passed, and, uh, there's anything else, or we're good? Alright, Lars, thank you on that one, are you on the next one too?
We are, yes, I am.
Oh, I didn't know that, I don't know why, I thought it was someone else. So, we'll go ahead and, uh, move on to item seven point seven it is. Uh, consideration of resolution for an exception to the one hundred and eighty-day wait period to hire a CalPERS retiree as an extra help county employee, and consideration of advanced step hiring of Brian Powers as an extra help employee, Director Lars Ewing.
Alright, uh, Lars Ewing, again, uh, the reason this is, um, uh, non-timed, uh, not consent, is the state law requires that it not be on consent, so just, just for your, your awareness there. Um, uh, Brian Powers retired from, uh, from Lake County Public Services, from the county, uh, but working in public services as a construction project manager in November. Uh, he's worked for the county prior to that for about ten years, prior to even that. He had about, uh, thirty years, twenty to thirty years of, of construction management experience. So, uh, he, he has a, a breadth and, and depth of experience that will help us. Um, it's important now to, to talk about this hundred and eighty-day wait period. Uh, CalPERS retirees, uh, are typically, by, by state law, required to wait, uh, a hundred and eighty days before they come back and work for any jurisdiction in the, uh, in the county, yeah, well, in the state, any, any CalPERS jurisdiction. Uh, the exception to that is if the governing body, uh, waives that requirement, uh, and the resolution does just that. Uh, so, I, I can go into detail about some of the reasons that, um, that I'm recommending we bring him, uh, back as an extra help employee. Uh, the projects, uh, specifically that are listed here are the, uh, the National Guard Armory, uh, we have the East Lake Sanitary Landfill Next Phase of Construction, uh, Kelseyville Senior Center renovation, along with the Courthouse Campus Solar Carport. So, there's quite a few projects that we have coming up. Uh, a couple of those are starting in just a matter of a few weeks, uh, so it'll be beneficial to bring him in a, bring him onboard in a timely manner. Uh, and that's what this does, is, is it waives the one hundred day, one hundred eighty day period. He still is bound, um, by, uh, for insurance reason, I believe, it's, it's a twelve-week period that he does have to wait, so he could come back onboard, February fourth is what's proposed in that resolution. Um, so that's the A part of the item. Uh, item B is, uh, should your board be willing to, uh, to bring him back? Uh, it's, it's an advanced step hire. He, he retired, um, at a, and I apologize for having to flip to this, but he, uh, he retired at a step five in the, in the, uh, the position of, uh, Public Works Construction Project Manager, and that's the, uh, that's the rate of pay that I would suggest that we bring him back on.
Alright, are there any questions? Supervisor Sabate?
So, I, I know that CalPERS gets really picky, and I'm just wondering if we have any, uh, context or, uh, contact with HR regarding how many of these we've done? I know we did one six months ago, nine months ago, just kinda curious if we're still in the clear to do this, or if this kinda r- r- raises a, a bright flare for CalPERS to take a look at us and make questions as to why we're doing-
She's on.
Oh, good.
Pam?
Yes, CalPERS is actually heavily scrutinizing these requests now. Um, the ones that they don't tend to scrutinize is law enforcement. Um, in fact, um, we have somebody in another department who, um, came back before the hundred and eighty days, and CalPERS said, "You may only keep them for one year, and then you must terminate them." So, they're holding our hands, they're asking a lot more questions nowadays, especially when you come back before that hundred and eighty days. Also, we, um, for benefits purposes, it's the six-month waiting period, um, because if he works over the twenty-four hours in a week, then we would have to offer him benefits.
Thank you.
Alright. Um, I didn't open up the public yet, did I? So, I'll open it up to the public if there's any comments. Bring it back to the board for action.
Just brief questions, uh, do you have a, a date on when Mr. Powers, um, retired?
Yes, it's in the resolution, it was November first, uh, November first, twenty twenty.
That's why I couldn't find it on the memo, gotcha. Um, and were we flying the position to fill the position, and struggling to fill the position?
No, it's, 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 as an extra help position, it's not a, um, we, we, his, his retire, his retired position is being recruited now. We haven't filled it yet, um, but as an extra help position, he would be, it, we're, we're paying for it out of, um, i- i- it's not an allocation, we don't need an allocation to fill the extra help position, just, uh, uh, just the, the, the funding to, to pay for it.
No, but the, the important part was you telling me that you have been flying the position since he's retired, and so, okay. I just wanted to make sure that there was an effort to fill the position. I know sometimes it's not as simple, it's just flying the position. Uh, okay, thank you.
Alright. See, Vice Chair?
Yeah, I know we have to be careful with CalPERS these days, but I think this is a great benefit for us, and I appreciate that he's available and willing to come back and help, so I'm in full support of this whole thing.
Alright.
Offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered.
Sir Owen?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabate?
Aye.
Supervisor Rasmussen?
Aye.
Supervisor Piska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, and then with item B?
We have to handle that separately?
Yes.
Yeah, um, I move that we approve the advanced step five hiring of Brian Powers.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you Lars.
Thank you.
Thank you, and so, uh, we are at, uh, the closed session item of our, or, we are at closed session, uh, by number eight on our agenda, and, uh, do I, should I announce, or should just read them all anyhow? I gotta read them all anyhow, but do I announce what we're only addressing today? Okay, so we are going to push back items eight point one and eight point two to a late, to a later date to be determined. Um, and so, I'll read all three of them off anyhow. Uh, eight point one, Public Employee Evaluation, Water Resources Director, uh, which will be pushed back. Eight, eight point two, Public Employee Evaluation, uh, title Special District Administrator, and, uh, eight point three, Public Employee Evaluation, Air Pollution Control Officer. With that, we'll go into closed session. Um, just note one more time, eight, eight point one and eight point two will be at a later date, we'll be, uh, discussing eight point three today. So, uh, we'll go to closed session.